Can you help us, Jeffrey?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sorry. Ready. Okay, we'll call the work session to a quarter. We do have a course, so that's good. So, we had a meeting with our grant writers, which was very informative and very educational, and they suggested we do this work session to prioritize our projects. And first one, the only project I have in mind right now is our park order, and that's taking all of my efforts and following up and doing everything I can to make that consistent. The only other thing I would like to see is maybe one of our our water improvements being done. But that's for everybody else to describe just as well. So, anyway, um, do we want to just start with, um, what projects people have in mind and just go around the room?
Well, I look back at what we talked about in the minutes, like in October, between 2012, and we had listed on the minutes in our packet and everything. And of course, my, my desire would be to have something, uh, for a lot of money go to emergency areas if we could.
Right, we're gonna work on that.
Yeah, so that would be the goal.
There's wonderful thoughts in here, but that's the one thing that I would like to concentrate on. And, um, I was researching the Tribe's website and their ability to help us, and so that, I think, might be a really good place to put projects, especially for Michael Day and his group, that what they have come up with as far as projects and equipment, especially what they're needing. Thank you. Fran, did you have?
Well, yeah, I appreciated having the TSP and the Parks Master Plans. Thank you for providing that. And of course, our strategic plan, we just adopted. So, I have a lot of different priorities, and if we have grant writers, it's good to get these priorities down because they're looking for various sources. And one of them, the strategic plan is acquiring more to a watershed or watershed protection. And there's a DQ grant for that and, um, for both acquisition, um, either of property or further setbacks from creeks, even further than the, um, the new Forest Park support we provide. So, that would be a priority for me. Um, this, some of this stuff in the Parks Plan has been accomplished, but other things have not. Some of it's very simple, that we don't necessarily need grants for, like making sure people are not approaching our public right of ways that are on our oceanfront. So, some of those require, you know, if we get a contract engineer or surveyor on board, that can be done. But these other things, acquiring any parkland and would be something that would be certainly good for the grant writers because Oregon State Parks, um, has regular, um, both small and large ramps that towns are eligible for. And then the federal highways is how, we got a lot of money for the Highway 101 acquisition, and they don't have those grants regularly anymore. But if somebody's looking for grant funds, this is, this is, uh, that would be great to do. And, um, in terms of the transportation system plan, um, I, I think it's not in there, but the safety on 101, certainly, um, those are the flashing lights. I would love to see one either at Clark or at Collins, like we've been talking about. And also, just finally, working with ODOT to get all these, um, handicap and stronger inaccessible sidewalk cuts made, especially between Sunset and, um, wherever it is, past the, uh, almost off to Walmart. And also those sidewalks that were, you know, three feet, somebody could fall off of them by fireworks code. So, there's a lot of transportation system things that could really, um, benefit from, um, grant funding. And then we'd have to, of course, get ODOT's okay with it, but they want us to take care of the sidewalks, so.
So, do you, um, what project would you, how would you go about getting these projects going?
Well, we need, um, we need, first of all, if it's our transportation system plan, we can point to that. And then the grant writers can say, here are, um, hey, Deepo Bay has this in their transportation system plan, and it doesn't meet handicapped accessibility requirements of the state and feds, therefore, we need a grant. So, the grant writers know how to couch it, but we have enough in our transportation system plan to allow that same thing. If it's written down in our Parks Plan or our strategic plan, it makes it much easier for the grant writers to point to it and say, hey, Deepo Bay has prioritized these things and let's go for it. And then finally, I don't mean to ramble on there, but we've been talking about updates to our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances and that. We only have a contract planner a few days a week, so, um, and I don't know if, um, you can, in this, um, in this capacity is interested in spending more time, but if we have, we could do additional contract planning hours, whether for Kit or some other person that we bring on to help us work through our updates. So, that's my ideas.
I like some of these proposed ideas that we haven't done yet in here, specifically, um, Winchell Street lookout trail, where it says no walking, no, you know, where it's really steep to get down to the, um, to the bay, right there.
Yeah.
There's a sign that says dead end and no parking and all that. It'd be really nice to make that more accessible to get down to.
And I think Brady and I talked about.
Yeah, that was in a Parks, uh, Vision project a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some really good ones in there.
That's what I provided, everyone.
Oh, okay.
I provided them all with this.
Okay.
And then the one I.
Yeah, I did do that.
I, um, the Channel End, the proposed idea there to make it more, um, pedestrian friendly and.
And one right next to it is where the people are approaching on our right of way, right approach.
Yeah. Yeah, and just acquiring more, uh, parklands, sign on the list, of course, harbor.
So, what, have you identified property in Deepo Bay that could be acquired through Parks?
Yes.
As a project?
Uh, I mean, I have personal opinions.
Yeah.
But do they come directly from us or is it more appropriate you have to use like the Parks?
We're gonna have to do it through us because we have two people on Parks and we have seven locations, and so.
Sure, you gotta.
That's gonna, a lot of us done it.
Um, South Point, there's somewhere some areas for parks. And right next to, uh, Title Race, just, um, south of where we do have that park, that old dilapidated house there, that'd be a great place to expand. Lost, I guess, yeah.
So, what we need to do is, is make them a project, right, huh?
Okay.
So, does someone live in that house or is it?
The gym. Brady, some of them.
I, I understand the city went for that and it was like over a million dollars.
Yeah, Brady.
And the city chose not to do it because it was like a ninety percent.
No, that is not true.
That's what I was told.
It's not true.
Okay.
What's true is that we had a million point two and we offered it to the landlord and he turned it down.
He went seriously?
Yes, we had it in hand.
From a grant?
Yes, from federal highway grant. Landowners didn't know.
Nobody's living in it right now.
No, it's basically.
He thought it was worth two million. And he might think it's worth more now.
Actually, it's.
That would be a great property to have in the city.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause you take the house out, you could line the two parks together.
Yeah.
But that's, that would be a huge project.
It is empty.
I thought somebody told them they would occasionally live there, occasionally stay there or something.
This daughter lives there somewhere.
Ah, okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, if we're talking about acquisition of a plant, I'm really interested in the lot that is on North Point. It's that kind of middle lot, it just sold, and I think it sold twice during the pandemic. Um, and it would be, it's basically like right across from the new parking lot that we're putting in. Um, it's an excellent place for a park. It's, when you look at it, like from above, it looks like it was planned as a park. There's like eight or ten lots that all front that, that home property. Um, but as I'm thinking about it, South Point really doesn't have any parks. And we have, and the North Point at least has the, that trail area. I mean, it really does seem like South Point should be prioritized really, 'cause there's none.
Is there big land for sale right now?
There's a few lots for sale.
When I think of South Point, the thing that always comes to my mind is how we are losing access to the, um, the cliffs there. Um, and there, there was an access that is now being built upon, and there is another access point, um, I don't know if.
That inside corner where the fire hydrant is, that you can kind of walk through that wooded trail, yeah.
There's no trespassing signs all through the trail.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause somebody purchased that or something and posted it, 'cause it was a footpath now at one time.
So, the scenic lands committee way back when, if you want to put history in it, it belongs to the neighborhood, isn't it? And, um, so people from the neighborhood can go, and it might be easy enough for this, um, the city to purchase an additional easement or something to allow the public access. You know, I've gotten permission from neighbors to allow me to come on that area to survey the birds and stuff like that. But it technically belongs, it's not public property, it's private. For, it doesn't even exist anymore, I don't think, there's this street, and it's not just, I forget what it's called, that, that neighborhood association. And that's, so that wouldn't be that high a cost, I don't think, to approach that association and have we're to pay their insurance or whatever maybe, but that's not necessarily needing, like, for grant money. That would be what they do.
Yeah.
Just get the.
No further to the.
North.
Yeah.
It's, it's Point Street and Cliff Street intersecting.
There is some property in that area. There is, um, I'm, I'm not very familiar with that area. There is a piece of property at Forest Park, which.
Oh, that's Little Oak Cove.
Yeah.
So, that's a gated community.
Yeah, there's walking, making, walking.
Walking Woods, same thing, it's a little one.
Uh, that's calling Manzanita. Oh, I don't know, that's way up there.
Stanley.
Do you have anything else?
Forest Park.
Oh, just for the lineup position? No, it doesn't really seem like South Point that needs attention more than North Point, 'cause North Point already has a trailer area, but like, I think that lot is like perfect for it, but really, South Point, it doesn't have.
It's great, it has all those benches, sand gaps.
Yeah, yeah. It does, it has something like that.
Yeah, look for your sign. Which ones?
Oh, just other ideas? Yeah, comprehensive plan. Um, I, I, I would like.
There's a house.
Try to try to comprehensive plan. The, um.
That's Good Will Code.
I think we're getting, um, we are getting, I'm just saying.
DLCD has a grant specifically made for that, and we didn't apply the right grant, I seriously apologize.
Oh, sorry.
We applied to one that was in combination with another organization, but DLCD is the grant specific for getting complete updates.
Yes.
Right, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a big one.
Is that everything?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, basically.
Thank you. Um, I really don't have anything to propose. I don't have any projects or, or things that I want to spend money on right now, and, uh.
These are for grants?
Or on the grants, yeah. Uh, I would say this, I mean, you have a nice list of things to do, but, uh, uh, and thank you, Councilor King, for referring to that 1025 meeting, which I, I still think that's a pretty good list right there. And, you know, I like everything Fran said about ODOT grants, but you mentioned that we got a lot of money from ODOT. This last round cost us about three hundred thousand dollars, as you know. And, uh, and that's my red flag right now on grants, uh, is, you know, go into that just a little bit. Park grants, uh, you know, what, the one thing that concerns me right now about actually getting grants is the purchase of, of properties, because our properties are under a lot of pressure, growing pressure right now. It's taking a lot more time on staff, there's a lot more things that simply aren't being done everywhere. And so, I think, you know, we, we have to think about this stuff as we propose all of these grants. What's going to be the maintenance on anything that we buy? It's not just that we're getting free money from somebody. We have to maintain these things, that money has to come from somewhere. We're not, and since we're not getting any additional, uh, general fund money, you know, we have to answer that question. Comprehensive plan, absolutely. Lindsay mentioned, uh, the acquisition of, of a lot, and that got me to thinking. I'm assuming this could be for a park or something. Uh, just, just think about this. I know that you, you are all sold on this idea of building a park and a lot to put some electric chargers on, but what if we did this? What if we put the chargers on Bay View and turn that parking lot, what's going to be a parking lot, an ugly parking lot, with chargers right up there on the, you know, and turn that into a park? Uh, and then we would be able to save the money that we would otherwise put into a parking lot. And these parking lots are a problem. Tonight, uh, at the next meeting where you're gonna hear about this RV plan, and believe me, Lincoln City and Newport have had nothing but trouble. You build a parking lot and they will come in their RVs, they will park there, and good luck trying to get rid of it. It's a, it's just a constant battle. But that would make a beautiful park. Everybody would see it as they drove by, it'd be attractive. You know, you could walk up to it.
Another question, I think if you put chargers in the parking lot, permanent people stop their cars, would you combine the two? You're not talking.
Well, I'm thinking of Herbert Street Parking Lot right now in Newport. It's where they've got that Art Deco bathrooms. Uh, and what they've got are three chargers up in the corner of the parking lot. Okay, they just devoted that and they plunked them right there. They didn't have to build any new facilities, ready to go. Bring your chargers in and set them up. Just that I had an idea, a thought.
All right, and? Was that it?
That's it, sorry, Mary, thank you.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Can I, can I contribute? I'm kind of late to the party, so I'm doing more listening lately than commenting, but I have a couple projects. Um, Brady, you'll like to hear that top on my list is, uh, anything to do with water treatment and water distribution system, infrastructure things, redundancy. Any engineer will tell you that is really critical. We can chat later about the membrane system that I had nightmares with when we installed it, so not a real fan of those. But, um, OHA, I got many hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money from Oregon Health Authority for the little eighty-six, you know, hookup system up at Cascade Head, and, um, it was pretty easy to submit the applications and then we got the money, and some of it was loans, some of it was grants. Um, the coolest part of the whole thing was we actually had a grant administrator. Um, the costs for her were written in the grant, so the grant paid for all of her help, and it was a ton of help, so I'm sure our grant people will do that too. Um, and then the other thing is, um, some kind of sidewalk, um, crosswalks from 101 all the way down to the harbor. It's, it's almost, it's scary through there. I travel it every single day and I just hope I don't hit somebody someday that's walking down the middle of the street. There's no accommodation for handicap, you know, roll, I see people in wheelchairs and, you know, crutches and all kinds of stuff, and it's very, very dangerous. So, I would like to see a real focus put on that heavily traveled, um, section of, you know, little, little roadway. But, um, definitely a crosswalk from that new parking lot across the street to the stairs that goes down. And then I'd like to see that parking lot behind the horn. I, I'd really like to see the trucks off the road. The truck, the, the delivery vans and trucks in the middle of the road are just an absolute hazard. I question why they can't come in and park on that first line of parking spots and, you know, save that for eight to 10 in the morning or something, and it's truck parking, but I'd really like to take a serious look at that stretch of road. So, that's all I've got for now.
All right.
Mary, could I ask something? Shoot. Um, at the meeting on the eighteenth, we were informed, uh, from a couple of levels that because we don't have completed financials for three years, we are unable to get grants.
Some grants, some grants.
Okay, some grants, yeah. Well, let, let's, let's look at some of those grants. I'd be interested in what you're thinking of. I know that, uh, a harbor commissioner came in and told us that she had discovered we can't get that USDA grant, being told for two years that that was gonna close the gap and solve our problems down on the harbor. Now, some grants, I, I don't, I have no idea what we're talking about here, but, uh, I think that we may be putting the cart before the horse here. Uh, we're spending a lot of money with consultants, and we're not able to get the grants, apparently, that we need. Do we know that we can get ODOT grants, for example, without, uh, audited financials? Yes, we can?
I think so.
Well, think so, it's not we can't. I, you know, this is, we have to really think about this, folks.
Uh, the challenge is.
That's what the grant writers would do. They would look at the criteria.
Well, that, Fran, that's, that's, that's wasting our money right here, I think. We need to, we need to have this stuff done before we go out and look for grants. But wouldn't you agree with that?
Well, there are some that have, like all the federal grants, would probably require a lot more financial audits and stuff like that, especially if there's, you know, match or, you know, payback. But a lot of the others do not. You know, we're in a municipality, you know, we're getting our house in order, and I certainly agree that, um, we don't want our consultants with the amount of money we have wasting money, but they're not going to go after grants, they're not going to be going after grants that don't meet the checkmarks. So, and they're very efficient, they, these people have worked for, you know, Cascade West and Rare for ages, so they could say, no, you're not going to, like, Valleys Grant from Department of Health or Health Department, they're not going to need the financials. And if that's an easy, um, fix for some of the water issues, that would be huge if we didn't have to spend all the, like, discretionary money we have to keep on updating our infrastructure. It'd be, it would sure free up a lot of money for all our other priorities we never seem to get to.
Fran, I agree with you. I am not anti-grant. I think you all have wonderful ideas, and we all have nothing but the city's best interests at heart. But, uh, I saw some, uh, something in one of these documents where it said, well, if we don't get the grant, we can go out and borrow money, yet, you know, we don't have a Moody's rating. So, what is happening is that this is starting to catch up with us. This failure to get these financials fixed, which from our city reporter, I hear we're not very far away from doing that. It might take one big last push, and then let's get our financial house in order. And then, because right now, this, they're going to have to investigate these grants. It's, I know they're efficient, obviously, I mean, they're, they're in the business, but this throws an impediment in their way. They're going to have to start sifting through grants, finding out what's good, what's not. Uh, we need to get the best grants that we possibly can under the very best circumstances that we can, federal dollars. I mean, we should, for heaven's sakes, yes, be in line for those things. I'm worried that, you know, this is just a, a, this is really truly almost a fiesta.
Why does not?
I mean, I think that, um, that's why we're hiring the grant writers, you know, 'cause they have the expertise to know what lengths to go after. And if not, we have to own the grant line, but I think that they would ask us questions, we would give them the answer, and then they would go with what they felt they could change. I mean, doesn't that how it works?
We are putting the cart before the horse?
I don't think so. I think we could go after some things to, to finally keep go, and keep making progress here in town. We've, we've been putting everything on hold for so long, and things are deteriorating, especially our water treatment plant. If we could go after something there, it doesn't hurt to research it. Tell the grant writers to, you got one of our projects that we have coming up with Brady, and take it for counsel and, and see what we can find. I don't think there's any hurt with that. And I do think the comprehensive plan should be right at the pri, our priority, top of the list if we can go after something there. And that, it didn't take, um, financial backing to apply for that one that we did last year.
They want some either in time or.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we definitely have to have something to put forward, but it's, it's a reasonable amount.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, that's a government grant, uh.
Yes, Fran.
It just seems that this exercise, whether we go apply for a grant now or be much for more system, this prioritization is what we're doing.
Right.
And I think that, you know, you know, I understand these is concerns. I don't think we're in this dire straits for a lot of brands as you think, but I think this prioritization, just getting our, you know, if it's for parks, it's these three. If it's for water, it's these three. If it's for emergency, it's this type of stuff. I think that will move us forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, whether or not we say go for this grant or go for that one. Um, but that will be that dialogue like they did with the harbor. Do you, are you authorizing us to go for it? We're looking at the harbor, and then we sign a work statement. So, they don't do things unless we specifically tell them to. So, I think that's safe.
Well, can we tell them what you came up with in October, that we want to do, uh, the harbor? Number one, anything that will help us close that, that gap or fix things?
They have already been instructed to do that, and we have a meeting with them tomorrow, you and me and Roy.
Right.
About the project. But the difference is, that is a fully fleshed, ready to go project.
Right.
They cannot work from a guidance document without having narratives, cost specifics, details, that's, we're not, we would have to pay them a lot more to create those forums, 'cause remember, they came to that work session and the whole presentation was about projects, not ideas. So, my question would be, these are all great ideas and I love them, but what do you want me to do? I mean, what, I can't go to the, to the grant writers and say, we want to do these things in the Parks Master Plan. I, I can't do that without having specifics. So, I would love to know what you would like me to do.
So, I see it a little bit differently, right? What we have is, just say, let's just pick one. Let's say, um, we want to do something in the transportation system plan. Right. Um, we do have, it's, yes, it's the idea, but what it then needs is, um, a Brady to go out and say, uh, this is approximately the money we will need, and this is, you know, this takes engineering, this doesn't. I don't think these ideas that are in the TSP and especially in the Parks Plan are that far from being reality. We just say, this seems to be like a hundred fifty thousand dollar project. I, I, I don't understand what their limitation is.
You know, if it's specific, you can't.
Have you looked, I mean, Councilor, I know you are familiar with grants.
Yeah.
Some of these grant applications are very complicated. They want to know, have you talked to other partners? They want to know what our budget is, they want to know what our financial plan for this project. They want details for the project. They want to know if we have a contractor picked out, they want to know if we have design done. The answer to those questions would be, no. And that would say to them, we're not ready. We're not ready to go after this grant because we don't have enough of the information, unless, of course, we're going for a plan grant or a design grant or something like that. If it's an actual project, Brady would need to provide more than just an estimate of costless. It's a, maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, I could suggest maybe a small grant, we can do that with depending on what we would go for. Um, but if we're looking at maybe doing a larger project, possibly anything in water and wastewater would need way more sothing and cost.
Because these things are in our system development plans, and they are approved because the city council.
And they are approved because the city council and prior harbor commissions are prior, so those have been approved. That, yes, the stakeholders are in it because we are the citizen development committee, right? And these are in our system development plans, they're in our TSP plan, they're in our Parks Plan. Yes.
There's not a single schematic.
What's that?
There's not a single schematic or design or a proposal.
Or cost or budget or any, we have, on some of these things, we have an old, like for the Parks Master Plan. But we have old costs, so Brady would have to go out, we'd have to get new costs, we'd have to find out about his design, and it's gonna depend on what grant we go for. Like if we go for a design grant, we might not only, we might need some idea, the city engineer could help with, but it really, each grant's different, and I've been looking at a lot of grants lately because I really want us to go after some. And I'm just looking at some of the applications thinking, I can't answer these questions. Our grant writers can't answer these questions because we don't have answers for some of these things.
How do we get the answers?
We have to have somebody design the project, determine what the project is, and do the research and the labor. We can say, we can take a particular project, but land acquisition is different. You guys want a project, a land, that's easy. You know, we could get property to that. We know what we want, we know what property we want, and we know what we wanna do with it, right? Parks, that's easier to do. But some of these other things, we would need to have somebody design. We want to
If you have a good engineer record to help engineer and get drawings.
Didn't we just advertise for an engineer?
Yes, we thought, that's going to be you guys on the twenty first to meet with. We only got one. But they're a good one. They have a good reputation and their engineer record basically, you'll learn all about that. So that, that person actually would help us a lot with figuring out and figuring out what we needed for these projects, because that's exactly what they have experienced and helping us put together the narrative and the process and install projects. That's what we need.
So one of the thoughts from October twenty five was to utilize better the community center. So that's, that's something that we'd like to have a grant for.
Oh, absolutely. Council Rec has some great ideas. In fact, one of them is coming tonight to read this letter that I've been wanting to reach out to him regarding adult education in the community hall. Like, okay, there is lots of opportunities.
So then, as a city council, then we need to find the people to educate us for these particular things they want to do. So how do we find that, those people?
Okay, so for example, oh, to educate you on these things that you wanna do.
Yeah, in other words, you say that you, you don't have the information that you need for most of these things that we'd like to do, so how do we get that information to you?
Well, let's say, for example, I'm gonna use the example of the adult education for, that was a great idea. And I've actually been looking into it because there are grants that could bring, that we could use to bring education classes to that. It's, but I was like, where do I start with? Overcoast Community College. And I started following up, I go, well, they're coming tonight to talk about additional education. So part of it is us thinking out and brainstorming, what do we want to accomplish? And then we can go out and figure out what it's gonna cost this, and that's when we can go get, go get prices. The city engineer could help with that, you know, Brady can get his staff to do that. The bigger projects are the ones that are gonna be more complicated. The harbor restoration type projects are gonna be the ones more complicated. So it's really gonna be the council saying, let's fully turn on this, and then we go, okay, what's our next step? Our next step is to fully figure out what we want to accomplish, how much it's gonna cost, and then we can work the grant writers to go get. So the things that come to us in our budget all the time, right? Like Brady says, we're gonna need to upgrade our water treatment system and it's gonna be X, Y, and Z, and so that is and that most, some of these have been already identified in our system development plans. That's how we know what these are gonna cost and then. So, so we do have that, right? And have that narrative for those things, like the specifics beside.
That's what, what we're putting the engineering together for the upgrade of the water plant right now.
See, that's the piece we're missing.
So whatever can be taken off our general fund can go into some of these smaller things that we'd also like to get done. But we can never get ahead because there's so much backlog in getting our sewer treatment plan, our water treatment plan. And those things, because of the system development, these have to be scoped.
Right.
And yes, the prices have to be updated and everything, but this shouldn't be a barrier for them to say, and Valerie having, you know, worked on a water plant could help us identify or tell them, hey, look at this Department of whatever, whatever. So I think, and if we can free up all the money that we'd otherwise have to, you know, provide in a budget, should that would get some of these smaller things taken care of. Hundred percent in support of it. Okay, so let me, let me ask a question. Now, in the SPC, you identified a project, you identified what that needed to be done, right? What do we cost? And the cost, an estimate of cost. Is there do we have a design for the work that needs to be done? Are we just saying, we know we need to do this, this is how much we estimated we're gonna do? But then you just said, we're gonna need engineers to go to do some work on this. We're gonna need design. So that's my point. It's, it's more than just saying, we need to do this, and this is an estimate. There's details that we need to figure out. And that, a city engineer is gonna help us with that, big time. Huge, because that's exactly what, when you read the material, they have experience doing, which is kind of exciting. So I don't know if I'm communicating myself clear. I definitely understand where you're coming from. I worry that it's not enough, and that's really what I'm trying to get ahead of, is to make sure that we can tell the grant writers, go for this grant because we have the details we need.
So as a city council, do we need to pick a project and educate ourselves?
No, pick projects that, that you want to move forward on, that you think they're like prioritized and.
Yes, specific projects you wanna move forward. For example, the harbor restoration. The purchase of a property, a piece of property that we've identified, that we want. We want to bring adult education to the community hall. You know, what does this look like? And then it's coming together and putting up, putting together the package if you will. Can I push back a little bit? I did hear what the grant writers said, right? And they made us sound like it's too high a barrier, and it's not true.
Oh, I agree.
It is not true for a lot of grants. Yes, for engineering grants, you need designs, you need this, you need that, or you need to get a grant that gives us money to do that. But for many other things, the conceptual idea is all the grants required. And, and it has to be flushed out, and you have to justify it, and you have to put a budget figure to it, but it they made it sound like we can't do anything unless you have it fully flushed out.
Oh, okay.
And these, well, it did make it sound like, and that's what you said, well, what do you want me to do? You know, so if we can go, and everybody came with some ideas today, and maybe we can have another session where we say, here's our top three priorities in emergency, here's our three top priorities in parks, here's it for water, here's it for sewer. You know, and then we can come back and then reprioritize and just see where we are.
I love it.
Is this enough of a description that we have, or do we need more?
Exactly. That's exactly the way I think we should do it. We should say, these are the things I wanna do, and then what Brady and I could do is look at the material that we have of these particular things and say, is this enough, as you just said, and then what do we need? Do we need city engineer design? Do we need a better narrative? Do we need a better project description? Do we need updated costs? That's, that would be perfect, Council Rec, that would be perfect.
You know, I like that idea.
It's wonderful. I think that's perfect.
But I would say this, that how, between the time that we do these priorities and now, can we get our books done?
Well, it depends. When are you gonna have your next meeting to go over this? So I am meeting, I'm talking with a accounting person who I'm hoping can get us started on a twenty twenty one audit, meaning she's gonna gather all the paperwork. I've reached out to her. I'm finishing up with the review of the reconciliations for nineteen twenty. So I'm looking at getting her started so she can start, what's gonna be on the briefing tonight, so she can start going. So I'm gonna meet with her tomorrow at hours three because we're supposed to be getting that money from the county and I want to take advantage of it.
So how long would it take if we could get somebody on board and work on this?
I can't, I, I can't answer that, Council busy, because I don't know how busy they are. Um, part of the delay we had is been entirely on the county side because they just haven't had it come. Did you, uh, on the legislature, did you follow the legislature? There's a very exciting bill that is before the House right now to say that the Oregon State Revenue Department Revenue cannot hold funds back from our share revenue because of late audits. And they expect it to pass.
Yeah, because of the wire.
And it's because they said that people who are behind are unable to get ahead because you're knocking them in the marionette. Meaning that you're cutting, you're cutting their legs out from underneath them, and this is put forward by Secretary of State. So I'm watching this like a hawk because that must be very different state.
Yeah.
My, my point was that if we can get the nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one audits completed, then we're up to date.
No, we're not. We're twenty one, I mean, we're, we're three, three behind.
Well, again, if we're gonna go get, if we're gonna go out and try to get grants, we need to be unfettered by financial problems that would prohibit us from getting a grant. It is a little dishonest to tell the citizens and people, okay, that we're doing everything we can to get grant money in here and at the same time not being able to go out and get grants. I am not convinced, even though you have tried to reassure me that this is, that we should be going after grants when we don't have our books audited and people are turning us down. We don't know who it is we can go after and who we can't go after.
The grant writers actually have a pretty good idea of who we can go after.
But what about the missed opportunities?
Because some of these missed opportunities, we don't actually have credit for, and we're talking about the bigger ones, the federal ones. We're not talking about the DLCDs for the comprehensive plan or the caches or Montecito areas. Those are the little, they're worthy, but they're little, but they're not gonna require audited statements. They're gonna require financial reports, which I can provide.
Similar to Lincoln County.
Well, the little ones. What about the big ones?
The big ones like the federal grants, we're not ready for the property for them yet.
The ODOT grants, that Fran was talking about?
I don't get any of those. We got ODOT grants without providing audited statements, so yeah, so basically they won't be asking for that.
I know the SCA never asked for them.
Yeah. Oregon Marine Board did ask for them, right? When you guys got that grant. Wow, no, that answers who's going to be here. So, so yeah, there, there is, there is a challenge for us to go after the bigger ones without. But we don't really have any source to get any projects for those. Those would be the water wastewater treatment projects, the hat wall type of wastewater management thing that are being the, the A D G.
So obviously, for the emergency areas, we would like a grant. A lot of information, how many, we showed the water shoot, so then we should probably, this is what we need, this is what it's gonna cost. And then we have the information or documented from the amount of money, is that what you need?
And that's work together on a narrative to create to say, this is what you need. I'm not worried about our ability to get these little guys. And I mean little guys, but you, I'm not talking about the federal harbor restoration, of course, like million grays.
Okay, what's important, so that, okay, we can work on that. We've got, we're playing, two new really good people.
Thank you.
Experienced with this.
But I, I think Council Rec's idea of coming back and doing the part of getting that, I think that is exactly what.
Fran, thank you.
None of me. Yes, it is. Okay, I think we were, so she just opened this, everybody.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
That was good information.
So, um, yeah. Oh, cool. No, nice to meet you. Nice and happy to be here.
Previous mayors could still. Previous mayors could still use the back door. There's still a spot out there for you. Yeah. Okay.
So this is Bond's houses, two houses down. My house is just built here. This is Kent Street. Is that the small cells? Are the, so one of those needs?
Yes, yes, I need it.
Well, you should on this one.
I think I already, I was willing, yes, oh, it's, oh, yeah. I think we're gonna have to change something. We already just spent, so just give it right now. Write us a check or not. We actually do, as of whenever.
I'm gonna have to go take a damn job.
And you know, Council Rec sits on our slide, so I, I have a little insight into your.
Then you know exactly what it is.
And so she's our fault.
She's hot.
I'll, I'll have to actually, I'll get into that. Wonderful. It's like, Fran's gonna be asking about this, this and this.
He is definitely gonna ask. I love it. Should say so much. The more people ask, it just makes my heart pound. I guess that one of your news that did. Get to tell me now, they said, I actually heard a news, but yeah. Is online. Yeah. There's Fran.
Yeah.
My dear's burning.
No.
Yes, I'm ready to answer all your questions.
And he's on, he can, but he's certain. Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of telling me that.
Yes, it is.
I know that when I contacted, when you sent me this, they said, oh, if a bridge comes, I'll tweet you there.
You didn't tell me to have like rescheduled.
I, what was the address?
Well, it was already active. They were having. Oh, I can't. Oh, okay. You're gonna hear it twice.
I, I think, I'm just gonna, we can see it on the sixteenth. It's on Wall Street. He was saying, I would tell you that you have.
This month is like that. I'm like.
Thirteenth is the one that's there. Wall for, you know, it says Wall for the. Wallport, you know, it says, Wallport is a rare thing.
No, no. Like, of course, they could be all like this.
So this is. On this Sunday. Thirty, uh, thirty-five thousand just come in. And the.
My, my. Oh, you. I, I was gonna, I was gonna try to play back to. She was surprised. Yeah. We just got that. So I love President. There was still pretty big. Yeah. No, I wouldn't do that anymore. He's, I have lived and been, been in a lot of. Oh, and that was stupid. I'm not trying to, because the geese went higher. And he gets stoned, he enjoyed the scene, we take pictures. I never, I do it, yeah. Well, country takes a little for, for. I never did get. He used to down, yeah. And so he was, you know, like, come on, hurry up, you know. That's not. But I, yeah. But that's. Right.
That would be good, I think, that would be.
But I loved.
Proactive, in, uh, uh, yeah, action. The common way I mean is that we're stretching.
I, I got some of my bedroom, it's bedroom, but I have times. Oh, yeah, yeah, that one with the green. Yeah, well, I'm. I'm with them, with the, and on a grocery. Um, I have some things too.
Who were just.
I know you've done it with, with that before. And I've had another lady that was at the.
So the question is, is that. About regulations.
Her, my Collins, she's outside.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, so I was thinking, because we.
Uh, what, what was it?
I was going.
It was interesting, but they're playing it home, but, um. You know, I really, I didn't see it, I, I. People, the baby was making their whole issue, it's just like.
Yeah, if you can, so that's where I got. You know, it was something that folks can give me, but, um. And somebody type me.
I did talk to Carl, but, um, yeah, you aren't definitely, yeah.
I'm talking, um, but I'm just helping program. Yeah, I was trying to, um, we get together and.
Last year, so you can.
Yeah.
For some of the.
Yeah. I mean, with the door closed, you want, that part's a bit of a library, I don't think.
But it's had a. Oh, it's just, it's.
But just with that off.
And I see the. That.
And they took a car. Yeah, I don't know, just. My six building. So they went to the board, they probably. You walk in there, they all sound like. Really, you're gonna get one of them. Some of the guys who.
Oh, wow. Close up the door and start. So. No.
I didn't know those, I apparently I didn't picture the water. Zero two, yes. Uh, like.
No, that's. I wanted to be there, fill out. Can't get in.
But the ones that are. You want. I know, I didn't know it was pretty bad.
I was called. Because I think that.
I didn't know. You must have needed. It would keep some of them. Far, they would send around. Cause that causes. People that are leaving it on one.
Okay, so we'll try to.
So I think it's.
I, I like.
You know, my.
It was.
Yeah. That's what's happening.
Yeah. Agree?
I think you're right.
You would hurt me last.
That's not, uh, yeah.
Make that go, sound like six nine doggy echo.
That's great. Yelling. Thank you.
I think it is. Something happens in password.
Oh.
What kind of? Okay, we'll look at. So I'm gonna get another.
We get a little slide over here. Please throw me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, this is our February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three depot bay city council meeting. Give it to you to the roll call for us, please. Senator, Councilor Beasley.
Here.
Councilor Beddingfield.
Here.
Councilor King.
Here.
Councilor Rex.
Here.
Councilor Short, uh, Mayor Short, it's okay. I'm demoting you, you could, thank you. Councilor Sovereign is, um, on.
Here.
Today, and Councilor Watson.
Yes.
But not once. Alrighty, thank you. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda this evening? Has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda for this evening? Is there a motion to accept as presented?
I'll make that motion accept.
Is there a second?
Awesome.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consented agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes.
Thank you for these minutes. That's a lot of hard work.
Yes, it is. You will have, uh, paid batches every time, so. First getting caught up. We're getting caught up. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you can get opposed. Alrighty, thank you. We've got our commission and committee reports, um, and we've just prepared this. Did you have a report this evening?
Do you wanna talk about the?
Our wonderful fair, yes, please, yes, we had a fantastic fair on last Saturday with. Praying to Councilor Beasley, we had a hundred fifteen people there at our rural community center. We actually turned people away at the door when they saw that they couldn't get in. We were standing room only, it was fabulous, and I think it really, uh, is a good indication that people are willing to get ready now and, uh, be attentive to it. So we've got lots of things planned.
I think it was, it was very well advertised, thank you to the city staff for doing that. And, um, people seemed excited about it, they were very happy to hear they were getting a long fair, fair, well, fire fair. Um, sometime in the spring, and you guys seem to, uh, appreciate our efforts.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Yes, so, um, one thing that concerned me a little bit, um, was that the county, who is our, you know, collaborator, um, didn't really, um, acknowledge that the city was also having something between one and two, and they were going from two to four. And, you know, we promoted the cascade rise and presentation of the county, but it wasn't really reciprocated. And I'm a little bit concerned, not because of that, um, but if this is indicative of how our city and county are gonna collaborate when there really is an issue, we were kind of relegated to a less important role. And in a emergency situation, it's gonna be, um, all hands are board and really for full collaboration. And I just thought that this was sort of indicative of this, that we have a little bit more work to do to make sure we're considered equal, um, players and equal partners. And that's something that's important to the city should be as important to the county in terms of promoting the fair as, you know, we were in promoting the county's presentation. Okay. Any other comments? Alrighty, um, Harper Restoration, steering committee, do you have anything this evening, Liz?
Um, well, we're gonna be discussing it later on, um, agreement with P and D, but we didn't have a meeting and discuss, um. Some of the issues that have been coming up, that's the mentally fee that can't be worked through. So it's exciting, as soon as I got one new thing's kind of turned over, that we need to do, this is archaeological report and the, and that's required now by all the core engineers' projects. So it's interesting, so it's, it, I felt like we were being single that went on whatsoever. It's part of making processes now, and, uh, I feel like P and D communicated and was on top of it and we're moving forward, so.
Thank you. Anything from Harper?
Yes, um.
Should we?
I'm sorry. I'm Liz Martin. Um, we are busy in the harbor. I'm just talking about, we've got all kinds of projects underway and, um, um, trying to set a date to get together and talk about our strategic planning for the next five years and so forth. Um, and we had a lively discussion about more retrieves, which we will continue on with because of budgeting season. Uh, also updating, um, ordinances. We all have a list of ordinances and we're going through and making recommendations and so forth. Just trying to stay on top of things, and, um, we have a great committee that works well together, except, you know, five people are really active, so it's been great, so, um. It's, it's been a pleasure to work with them and, and just, I guess, I think we have some really good reconciliation for the harbor on the committee, so. So does anybody have any questions for me?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Liz, and appreciate the work on the school board.
Thank you.
And got a great new superintendent, appreciate. Um, this came up at the last meeting, we had a discussion, Jack was present. And, uh, I asked the question, well, uh, if, what do we do if we can't get, if we can't close this funding gap? Can we go ahead and move forward with a partial, uh, you know, not as big a plan? And, uh, Jack didn't think that was workable, but I am not sold on that argument yet. I think that, uh, my concern is this, that he said that if we don't spend this money by twenty twenty-six, it reverts. And it would revert and leave us with a bunch of planning expenses, money, this monies that we paid to the, to the engineers and, and in our performance and. And this would essentially end up being another ODOT deal. Um, so can we do this? Can we look at, at formulating a Plan B? That would allow us to build backwards from that twenty twenty-six date. My main concern right now is that we don't have a lot of time to get this money together. The theory being that twenty twenty-six is the drop dead date, that's when you have to have the construction done. And you have to, uh, to, in order, from what I hear, to stage these people and get them lined up to do this work, you have to be, you almost have to be two years ahead of the construction date, because we all know they just can't show up when we're ready. So that means we've got twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to get this lined up and done. We're on the final months, I would think, of being able to make this happen. So can it, so I would hope that this restoration committee could look at this Plan B and so that we can use this money up and not have to return. That's my concern.
I, I can't speak for Jack, I can't speak for myself. And I don't think that that's a problem, if you had a different plan. I, I don't foresee S D to do that, I, I feel very strongly the money will come forth.
Where, from where?
From where? Well, we have a new grant writer that's on top of it, that's their priority that they're working on right now. So that opens a bullet for us. We had another, uh, very welcoming, encouraging, uh, correspondence back, but, um, Dave Bomber about funding just, you know, last week, so it's February, okay, right? And, and there's no one that, that shares your concern more than I.
Oh, I see.
I don't wanna have any project, I, I, that's not what, how I set out for this to be. But again, I'm gonna take the optimistic view that I feel that the money will come through, but we will, if we can do a, 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 a cutback plan, I think we could, I mean, you know, if we had to. If we are limited to two docks or what, you know, whatever, what, and I guess what we want from now is find out what, what the cost would be for that if we only did two docks. I guess you're saying, we've got some things that we have to do. We have to have an ADA grant. And that has to happen, we're not gonna cut that back. Um, that, the, the things that we have, uh, projected to spend the money on aren't like little warming put beds as you go down the docks. And there, what I'm saying, this, this is all the stuff that we need to bring us up to code and to have safe docks. And the reality is, those docks have been in there for years, our chance to get new docks again is gonna come along, again, right? So my theory is we're gonna build them right and we're gonna do what we can. So I certainly would, uh, I'll take that back to the committee and we can talk to P and D about it and see what they come forth with, but I think, being that it's in the middle of February, and we have some really, uh, good indicators that, um, we will get funded then. I've been pretty good about it. Corresponding with Senator Murphy as well. Yeah. We're working on everything we can. Ms. Mayor, if I can make a twenty certification room of financing, the money doesn't have to be expended by the day, it has to be committed, thank you, committed, meaning we have to have a contractor, a construction post started, so as long as we have a contract, the money is okay. Wait, I got that confirmed from.
And that's in twenty twenty-six?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. So I appreciate your comment, I really do. I think that we all need to think very positive, because I think that we need to get it, get it done, we can, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, we had a report from planning, was there anything else from planning? Yes, come on.
You already had a report from?
Oh, we had a little synopsis.
Oh, okay.
In our package.
Um, the minutes, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, actually, the.
The plan is.
It's, it's, uh.
Second one, turn.
Jimmy's best.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I'm still fairly new to this information. Ms. Jen Embry and I have a house at thirty-five Pine Street in depot bay, but I don't reside there full time. Um, so I also didn't get a chance to read, uh, I think it was December minutes that summarized what I'm supposed to do here.
Okay. You're doing well so far. Keep eyeing.
Do you want me to summarize what's in this table here?
No, we're right over there. Jim, if, if I might, they, they just want you to update from, just a quick update, it may not need anything more than what's already on there about what you guys have been working on, and that might be.
Since the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. All right.
You thought.
Um, so we started the meeting talking about, uh, officers on the budget committee, president, vice president. Um, sounds like they, they may not be able to serve out full or future terms. We elected a new vice president, Rick Sherman. Um, and we went on to case file one C U P C twenty-two, which was the water pump station in depot hills, but also services web watch. Because of that, um. Because of that, my firm had done a little bit of work, not me personally, but my firm had done some work on the boil watch project. So I recuse myself for that. But the, basically the measure was passed, the permit was passed by commissioners. And with some concerns about noise levels, I talked a little bit with Reed here about that. They came up with a 60 decibel noise level measured at the property line, which sounds reasonable and attainable. Then we moved on to case file 3CS PC 22. That was the boat dock, which you're probably already familiar with.
Right.
That was an overhanger. It passed, I think, unanimously. And the last one, case file 1TA-22. I thought we made a lot of progress on the townhouse developments regulations. And we get a lot of instructions to the senior fire kit box. And he's going to work on that, although right now it's played pretty full with some other issues. So it sounds like that might take a little while. During our deliberations, I had some input, I thought that the four units was a little light and the 20 feet part was a little, was a little high. And we came to six units per building and 10 feet apart. It was one of the decisions. And also, some of the architectural requirements that were presented by Depot Hills were incorporated to make the buildings more safer pleasing, if they're broken up, they don't look like it's just one big building, but they look like they're warehouses, they just look close together. Distinct houses. I think that's about all we did last, last month.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for being here and thank you for updating us, that's very helpful.
Mayor, I ask you a question.
Here, yes.
Jim, thank you for that great report, appreciate it.
I did good.
Is it, what can you tell me about seismic standards in Depot Bay?
Seismic standards?
Yes.
I mean, it's a statewide standard. Department of Geology and Mineral Industries has databases for seismic accelerations all over the state. And from various earthquake sources. I mean, depending upon how close you are to the fault, the curbs, how much the acceleration is. Unfortunately, what I can tell you is that the science and engineering that goes into earthquake engineering is very empirical based. And because we don't have a lot of seismic records in Oregon, it's, it's more uncertain. So I think the committee has done a good job of trying to estimate the maximum probable earthquakes based on, you know, topographic and geologic evidence, but it's, it's very difficult. I practiced for six years in California. And earthquake engineering was much more precise because most of their faults were strikes or faults. And the distance from the fault was really well known and you could determine exactly what your accelerations are because of that seismic history. Every 30 to 50 years they'd go off, not every 700 or whatever we've got going on here. So it's, is that your question or do you?
Well, you said it's a state standard. I mean, what I'm getting at is have we incorporated this seismic standard into our planning process and as a requirement in building codes?
It doesn't really come into play in the planning process. It comes into play in the building process. The, the.
That's counters.
Yeah, the engineers, the starch engineers and the geotechnical engineers work together and come up with the assumptions for design of each structure based on where it is and earthquake sources. So it's, it's already predetermined for most of our state. It's not something you can change, I think, on a local level.
So how do we incorporate those into what happens in Depot Bay in the future?
It's pretty much already incorporated into the building codes at Lincoln County. When they do the reviews of building connects, they're reviewing structural calculations and those structural calculations include the seismic loads. And that's how that's done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Salmon Enhancement, am I actually ready to this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. And your public comments? Are there any public comments this evening? Pardon me, Dee. I understood, so I passed out a handout that had been provided to me close to four o'clock. And I thought they were coming tonight, but they wanted to read this into the.
They're online.
Are they online? Okay, there we go, wonderful. Okay, so there we go, thank you. Hi. Is this, can you give us your name and your position?
Sure, thank you so much for this time. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Dr. Andres Oroz, proud resident of Depot Bay in Little Will Cove. And I have my colleague here who, he can introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Dan Lurin. I'm the Vice President of Academic Affairs at Oregon Coast Community College and another proud resident of Depot Bay.
Wonderful, thank you both for being here. So do you want to read this entire presentation in or as we do as submitted, or give us an update on what's going on?
We can do a brief update, we have all the information in front of you. So, great. So Oregon Coast Community College, pending approval from their Board of Education, will be proposing the opportunity to, to bring to our voters the opportunity to vote on whether or not to pass a proposed bond measure that will fund a new facility to house trades and vocational education opportunities in Lincoln County. If the measure passes, the bonds will raise $32 million and will secure $8 million of matching funds from the state of Oregon. Dan, do you want to continue on the next section?
I absolutely. If the bond passes, we're looking to construct a brand new trades education center, which is going to expand career options and skilled trades here in Lincoln County for our residents. We're going to expand, adapt, and modernize our existing career and technical education training facilities and acquire land that'll support programs including education, allied health, applied aquatic sciences, and welding. We're going to update classrooms, technology facilities, and equipment, providing students with modern higher education and job training specs, including flexible hybrid learning options to meet students' needs into the future. We're going to enhance facilities and acquire equipment contributing to community emergency response infrastructure. And we're going to improve our existing facilities by increasing their lifespan and efficiency. These will include site improvements, furnishings and equipment, and bond issuance costs. Right now, the new bond would increase the taxes paid by five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This is basically going to bring in $32 million to help us construct these facilities and modernize our existing facilities. And is going to be leveraged with an $8 million state match. So we're going to be taking that five cent increase per thousand to the voters and hope to be able to provide new opportunities here in Lincoln County. The council would like a more in-depth presentation on this in the future. We are happy to provide that.
All righty, thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
How long does this tax last? When is it, when it would, is there an expiration or a sunset on this, on this property tax?
Twenty forty three.
Twenty forty three.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 20-year levy that would go into effect 20.
I'm sorry, how many years?
It's 20 years?
20 years, okay.
This is, this is replacing the existing 20-year levy that the college passed back in, that was, sorry, that the voters of Lincoln County passed back in 2003 or 2005. So that levy is sunsetting. And what we're doing is basically passing, or asking the voters to pass a new levy here in 2023. Basically, 40 years of levy in 38 years.
Yes, Fran. Do you have the property identified? Is it at the existing community college or somewhere else?
Andres? Sure, it's going to be right next to our property in central campus in Newport.
Wonderful. Like towards the louder property?
It's right next to our existing property, our current actual building that we have. We have that space already purchased and ready to go.
And what type of trade? It says, education, allied health, applied aquatic sciences, and welding. Are these, is that the trade you're talking about?
Yes, so the, the new career and technical education building will expand the welding program that the college started in collaboration with the Port of Toledo and Lincoln County School District. We have two sites currently where we're, you know, and collaborating at Taft High School to offer a new facility. We've been bringing additional welding into the main campus, as well as looking at career adjacent trades that would support growth here in Lincoln County. For instance, heavy equipment to diesel, mechatronics. The space is designed to be flexible so that as the community's needs change and new industry comes, we're able to pretty rapidly swap out programs. What we're talking about is a facility that's got movable electrical drops, wide open spaces that you can move equipment in and out of. It starts to blend what we consider the laboratory training space with the classroom training space. So for instance, the community was in need of training firefighters at some future date. We could start up that program until we've met the existing need here in the county and then move that out for something else.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen, we really appreciate the update and will, I'm all in favor, but I'll be voting for it. Thank you very much for being here.
Well, thank you.
Okay. We had a nice letter from the, I'm your unfinished business, Miss, from Hennepin Beach. Wanted to meet with us again. And so we've set up a, a meeting on the 21st at 5 o'clock before we're ready. Do you have that kind of board?
You're going to have an attorney here or?
Yes.
No, we'll have the attorney here.
Because if I remember, last time we were pretty clear on what we said and this letter seems to indicate that they still have a misperception of what our intent was.
But I think we need to keep the communication open at this point. So I, I think we should meet with them and hear what they have to say because they do have some recommendations for us to.
I'd like to second Fran's opinion of having some time to speak with our attorney before we meet with Brenna and Sir Dusier.
Oh, okay.
Maybe like a half hour before the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. 4:30? Sorry, 4:33? Okay, okay, we can set that up. So it's 4:30? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, going forward, Councilor Committee assignments, has everybody got a chance to relook at these? And go further on what you're invested in and. So is there any changes or concerns about assignments? Is there a motion to accept them as they are stated at this time? We don't have anyone on the safety committee. I'll go ahead and volunteer for the safety committee. So we've got somebody going for that, sorry. So you add my name in for under safety committee first?
Maybe Autumn would pick that up.
The safety committee?
Or water, or least water advisory also.
Oh, we could do safety.
You want to do safety? You want to be the primary? Okay. I'll be secondary then alternate. Is there a motion to accept the assignments that's presented?
Move to the second.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept our committee assignments that's presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I am opposed? All righty. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to Lincoln County Veterans Resource Center presentation. Can I state your name for us?
I am Keith Barnes, I'm a Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer.
Okay.
A resident of the law court.
Oh, wonderful, nice to have you here.
Thank you. So I want to take a chance to introduce myself and my office. Did you guys get a copy of the?
I did not.
I provided, I hope that she still has it, but if not, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
So my name's Keith Barnes, again, I am a Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer. And my number is on the form there. I didn't bring any cards because I thought it was going to be on there.
Would you like me to go around the email box, I can see if I can print this for you?
Oh, that's okay.
Are you sure we can get?
You can get it, right, yeah. So a little bit about myself, I grew up in this area and then my dad graduated from Taft High School back in the 1950s. My grandpa worked at the high school and my grandma taught elementary school for Taft Elementary back when I was back on Schooner Creek. My other grandparents lived in Newport in the hotel where Georgie says now. So when I retired from a 20-year career in Arizona in law enforcement, I wanted to move back to Lincoln County, what I always considered home. And I'm glad to be back here. I spent eight years in the NSA Air Force and I deployed twice in support of Operation Major Storm. I have a son who's active duty and my son-in-law is active or reserve in the Navy right now. So I have a long lineage in, in the military history. My number two in the office, Caroline Carver, again, she's also an Air Force veteran and she's quite new to the area. While she was in the military, her parents moved out there during COVID because they could work remotely. And when she separated, she moved out there and she's been a great addition to my office. So I want to take this opportunity to introduce myself to the board and kind of what my office does. And we have to have a two sides of our office, what I call the dual function of the office. First and foremost is our support on veterans and veteran services, on helping veterans navigate through the VA, which is a complex organization. Work on disability and pension claims, healthcare enrollment, education and bulk rehab. We also have dependent and survivor services that we can work through in our office. We also think of ourselves as traffic cops, especially Lori, our front desk lady. If you need employment services when you're a veteran or no veteran, we have community partners that can provide that. Or if you need housing, if your housing is stable or you're homeless or houseless, we also have groups that deal with that as well. And they come and they, they participate with my office as well. So like I said, it's kind of like a traffic cop, oh, you need this, sit down here, if you need this, I got these people over here. And kind of a central resource or a central hub for all those services. The other side of the office is the economic impact that we do to the community. We support about 5,200 veterans in Lincoln County. We have about 1,800 that seek services through our office. And when I say that, is that that's disability and pension claims. So if you have a percentage of disability, you're given a tax-free stipend from the NSA, from the Department of Defense or through the VAs that you can spend on however you want to spend that money. And that equals out to about a yearly $25 million. So about $25 million comes into the county to veterans from the VA. The average award is about $1,500 a month. So that's about $1,500 a month that veteran gets to spend whatever they want to. And these are tax-free. And these are tax-free funds. So in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, also we brought in about a half million dollars worth of back pay. So if a veteran put in a claim three years ago and it took us three years to prosecute that claim, they would get that back pay back to that date. So that brings in quite a bit of money. I had a spouse, a dependent, her husband passed away. We worked that claim, my predecessor started it. And then I worked it for about a year and a half to get it through and she got about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Showed up in her bank account one day. I knew it was coming. I forewarned her that it was coming. She didn't believe it was gonna come and then I got a phone call from her while she was at the bank because the bank had shut down her checked her account. Because they'd seen a suspicious deposit of also only a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we had to reassure her that that was gonna be her money and that is life-changing money for her. Some other ones, an individual I was dealing with out of notice, I talked with him today. He had a heart attack and someone were able to work and were able to connect that heart attack to his time in Vietnam. He went from really, I mean, struggling in life to now he's getting a hundred percent disability rate, which turns out for him about thirty-six hundred dollars a month. So that is what it kind of works to and that's that economic impact that it brings into this community. Next thing I'd like to talk about is what is a veteran? A lot of people just assume they know what a veteran is, but there are some legal determinations in what makes a veteran. First, they have to have served in the active military naval or air services. So when I say active, that means they have to be under federal orders. So if you have a National Guard individual who only did basic training and then did six years in the National Guard but never got called up in federal orders, they not may not qualify for federal benefits. They have to have been called up to active service. Now, if they did get called up and they served nine months in Afghanistan and all the prep time to go into that, they would then be veteran and eligible for veteran services. That goes along with reservists too. They also have to have a little bit of time in too. And usually I talk about post nineteen eighty veterans because that's what we deal with a lot lately. They have to have done two years in active duty. So in order to get VA healthcare or like a home loan, the VA home loan, they have to have had two years of service or been released because of the injury that they sustained during their service. They also have to have an honorable or under honorable conditions discharge. So I relate that back as a lot of times to one of these presentations. Somebody in the audience said, well, if they're a veteran, they should get benefits no matter what, and I agree. But let's say a veteran or a service member was arrested for espionage. They wouldn't be eligible for services due to VA and we wouldn't want them to be. So I kind of mentioned that as well. Of course, we think about the Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard and the Space Force. But in certain situations too, the merchant marines might be eligible for benefits. The NOAA commissioned courts, so the NOAA boats there in Newport, they're commissioned, the officers that take care of the boat, that run the boat and charge the boat, they are also veterans or military members. And the US Public Health Services, so a lot of the nurses that are active duty that aren't actually in active duty status but work for public health, they are also receive veteran status. And a little known fact, if they served before nineteen oh six, the members of the US Geological Survey received veteran status. The only reason I made that is that was on a test that I had to take for this position. And I couldn't figure out why it was in the training materials because we don't have any veterans from nineteen oh six around anymore. Flip back to the economic impact of our office, so I like to talk about the two sides of it. If we look at the economic multiplier of that twenty-five million dollars, that's about a hundred and seventy-one million dollars of economic advantage coming into our community, meaning that if that person spends that money, that money will transfer hands about seven times before it leaves our economy. So that's about a hundred and seventy-one million dollars that comes through my small office right there. I leave on the back page the number for the National Call Center for Homeless Veterans and the Veteran Crisis Line, the new nine-eight-eight number, so I'll make sure that number gets out there. One of the things that I want to point out though is when you see somebody who has a sign that says they're a veteran, please call me, let me know about it. Because they may be a veteran and they might need my services. They might not be a veteran and they might just be saying that they're a veteran. So a lot of times what happens is I do get phone calls that, oh, there's this veteran at the intersection, he's got signs that says he's a disabled American veteran and I go and I kind of vet him out and I find out that he is not a veteran. Or if he is a veteran, he's not a disabled veteran. Or he might not have a discharge that would allow him to receive services. But I'm not gonna know that until I talk to him and provide those services. So if you come across that, please give me a call. Sometimes I know who they are already. Sometimes I, there'll be somebody new and I want to reach out to them. So are there any questions that I'm able to help you guys out with?
Yes, so that last page, is that something that is suitable for posting and like the news in our website and our at our post office? How do people know about veteran services?
Well, one of the things I've got is I've got some brochures being developed and I'll get them out. Please, if you have a website, please put my office information on it. I'm looking for any outreach that I can get because of those fifty-two hundred veterans, only about eighteen hundred are seeking services to us. And about once a week, maybe even more than that, we get a phone call from a dependent who says, my husband, he's got dementia. He was in the military, we need help and he's a veteran. And we always say, well, were you engaged with the VA? And they said, no, he never was. It's so much easier to do it when people are vertical and not horizontal. Because when it's horizontal, it's hard to get that information out of them. When did you serve? Where did you serve? And that sort of thing. A lot of people have this thought of the VA, I am not the VA, I am a county office, my boss is right back there. If I would have known he was coming, I would have canceled. Okay. But I want to get that information out, that the VA is not the same VA you see in Forrest Gump or in some of those other older movies. I received VA healthcare, I received my VA disability and the VA has been very good to me in the last three years. Oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Good.
Okay.
Blake's first. I have a friend whose son is really disabled and would probably need the services of a like a assisted living home until it gets medically better. And I know that the homes are in Lebanon and Portland. Is there any type of medical transport that you provide to get that particular person to that home?
So our office does not do anything like that. That is all through the VA. The home in Lebanon and the home in the Dows is actually Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, which is different than the VA.
Okay.
The VA does have a home in Roseburg and they have one in Portland and one in Vancouver. But there's no transportation services for them. But if they reach out to me, I do have some some ideas and some help.
We're gonna get all that.
Okay.
And to give my office a call, call my number and I'll call my number because I don't mention my phone.
Thank you. You don't have to review coming today.
No.
Keith, thanks for coming. Twenty-five million. I feel like we should be asking you for a grant.
If you put, if you put my phone number and my advertisement down there, I might be able to pay for some of that.
I wanted to thank you for coming out tonight and I hope I can get my fellow counselors to join on this. I'd like to make a motion for a verbal resolution. That be it resolved that Depot Bay salutes and welcomes all veterans and is grateful for the good works of the Lincoln County Veterans Office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it and we will get a link onto our website and help you in any way we can. Appreciate your being here and seeing you.
Absolutely. I think there's seven of you, right?
Yes.
So I have these challenge points. These are points from my office. Are you guys familiar with the challenge points? It's a military thing. A lot of times like commanders will present a coin to a subordinate or maybe it's something, somebody did something really well for me. As a military member, I might pass a coin on to them that I keep with them. Now I keep this coin with me at all times. And the challenge is, is that you'll be out at a coffee shop and I say coffee shop, but it could be any place that sells beverages. And if I see other veterans there, I might pull my coin out and start tapping it. And what I'm doing is I'm looking for other people to start tapping their coin. Nobody cha, nobody starts tapping, I'm gonna throw my coin down. I'm gonna challenge them. And if they don't have a coin with them, then they have to buy my beverage. If they have their coin, then I have to buy their beverage. So I'm gonna pass you guys around these coins. I spend a lot of time here in Depot Bay. If I see you, I may come up with that coin and challenge you. Also on the backside of that coin is the nine-eight-eight crisis line. Anybody who's in crisis can dial nine-eight-eight. But if you're a veteran or servicing a veteran, nine-eight-eight and then press one will connect you directly to the VA crisis line people. Individuals who are in crisis will find themselves in government facilities, government locations, looking for assistance. And this is a great way to keep that number with you so you never forget it. It was a lot better when it was a ten-digit number and you had to remember the whole number. Now that it's a three-digit number, they're kind of not as obvious. And then I have one, I'm gonna give it to the mayor for.
Valerie?
Valerie.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. These are nice. So there was a suggestion about a resolution. Can we have that considered on our next agenda, please?
Sure.
I'll be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for allowing me to be here for that.
Thank you. We'll work with you and get all that information posted.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a application for the budget committee. There is one keynote. Come look it up here.
I'm Robert Jamino, two-thirty Southeast State Department of ZB.
You know, the routine here. I mean, all the routine.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, thank you and distinguished council, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you for stepping up to wanna go through the budget.
I will say, I looked on the webpage just today just to look at the agenda pack. And so I happened to be flipping through it just to go through it. And I noticed my application and it was seriously truncated on both sides. So I don't know if you guys ever saw the original or not, but what you have looks like.
I can read it, yeah.
In a sense of all.
We can read it. It's red.
Yeah.
This is what it looks like. This is a pretty bad, you know, oh, online.
I imagine.
It's an written part.
Really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only if you look at it.
I'm just, you can't get any sense of it.
It makes sense.
It makes sense.
We understand.
I wrote it and I couldn't make sense. Anyway, there you go. So here we are.
Okay, I'll open the floor for any questions for our former mayor.
So of all the committees, why would you choose this one?
Because of the vacancies. I knew there were vacancies and, you know, I don't like to see any of them. I remember urban renewal, we almost always had many customers. Yeah.
Lots of experience.
Yeah, that too. I had experience on this committee, on that committee and a yoga.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for stepping forward and you have a ballot before you, counselor, so if you will mark the ballots. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys are fast. Quick, quick, quick. Okay. Goodness, are you all done now? Okay. Just need to sit in your corner.
Sure.
Okay. Should we do our other interview before we count the ballots, or you wanna do?
Oh, she's here.
And Counselor Sovereign is going to vote via text. She's going to send me her vote for every person that has her, oh, we're talking about. So she just sent me the ones. It's it's up to you, Mayor. Okay, well, go ahead and interview Sandy. Sandy, do you want to come on up and and introduce yourself? And Sandy is here wanting to be part of our new Houseless Advisory Committee. Thank you, Sandy, for stepping up and you've got great credentials as well. Do you want to give us a little background on why you're interested in being on this committee?
Okay.
Am I too soon? My name in my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sandy, hold on back. One, one, two, three. Go my way. One, one.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So you've got some experience in the past with helping people being housed and that type of thing. Do you want to give a little bit of background for?
Sure. From probably two thousand and one through two thousand and nineteen, I worked for a lot of rural housing developers who also owned and managed their multifamily properties and we did some homeless housing. But mostly my perspective is a completely from homelessness, although I know you a bit. But it is a big passion to me, housing in particular for everybody is a big passion to me, especially for those who are not able to, in this present day, afford housing. It seems to be getting worse and worse and so I'm grateful that the city people may have stepped up the faith to help address some of these serious issues.
Right, right. Yeah. Sandy, we'll have some limitations on our time available, so we'll work within her schedule as well. So I'll open the floor for any questions for Sandy.
Well, okay, so so where did you do this this work with homeless housing as part of your developments? California. I worked for the county moderate for a couple of years. And that was not for homelessness, but I worked for a large developer for eleven and a half years and they built two homeless housing projects. They unfortunately went under after the two thousand, two thousand seven, two thousand eight housing crisis. And and the people that I moved, moved to the people that bought their properties in two thousand and fifteen. And so they continued to manage homelessness. They did. The state of California changes what they want to fund kind of periodically. And so they were more eager permanent housing for the homeless. And they funded that, so that's what we did, that we built. One was in Santa Cruz and I was an analyst from that. But it was eleven units of housing for the homeless and county and the city partnered heavily with us. So they would screen the clients and then refer them to us. And then we funded housing and housing came with massive services to help them. Employment, health, drug, dental, you know, everything. So and then the second one we built was in Gilroy. And that was, I think, twenty-six years. Same deal. The difficulty that I was talking to the mayor about this is that there's a certain percent of the population that really are capable of functioning in society. They really are. They really want to get out of the hole that they're in and they just need a handout or a guide to help them. And there's a certain part of the population that is not able to function in a setting where there's rules and regulations that, you know, you can't sit your mattress on water. So so that was kind of my experience, the how difficult it is to house homeless. They need housing more than anybody, but there's only a certain segment of the population that really stay more than have to to help.
Well, thank you. I so appreciate your stepping up with your expertise. It's gonna be invaluable. This is really a big one, thank you. And she's also a very gifted grant writer. Lots of experience. Any other questions for Sandy and Sandy? Okay, you can write ballots again. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you so much for stepping up for more of your. Madam Mayor?
Yes?
We have seven yes votes for, um, Robert Gambino for the Budget Committee.
Okay.
And we have seven yes votes for, um, Sandy Holmbeck for the Houseless. Wonderful. Okay, is there a motion to accept the ballots as presented?
I, I would accept the ballot.
And there's a second, it's been moved and seconded to accept the ballots as presented. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, thank you, and both of you, thank you so much for stepping forward. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of work, but we'll get through it. Yes, I'm looking forward to it further. Okay, finally, Tim, come on, uh, Tim Johnson.
Ah.
Oh, it's Paul. That's right, Paul's coming in. Paul, come on, somebody, come on.
I get the hot seat.
You get the hot seat this evening.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Paul Sykes. I'm the solid waste, we've got District Manager. Kind of solid waste district. And I have sort of a reverse or backwards proposal for you. Rather than asking you for money, I'm actually asking you to give somebody.
Wow.
Uh, it's, it's a strange situation and thank you for, uh, Council Rec for her participation. She sits on our Regional Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We've been wrestling with kind of an issue for a year of how to best spend this money and how to address a couple of issues. And those two came together and got a nice, uh, dance. And so you're my first city to present this to, so ask all your hard questions here and the other cities will have a much easier time.
Okay.
Um, you've all received it actively, but let me just do a quick summary, all the, the, in a nutshell. Excuse me, County Minister, Tim Johnson. We decided to put forth $500,000 of my contingency budget forward and say, let's address this issue and do it right. Our SWAC can ask for $100,000 for cities to provide evenly among them. And so what we've tried to do is boil that down to even, even, try to make it an easy button for everybody here. So I'm gonna try and lay it out for you in a quick way, and you're gonna care about the city portion of this whole picture. If you're willing, ask that any portion of mine. Uh, in essence, in Lincoln County, we have an issue of RVs being dumped on our roadside, dumped in our parks. Um, we have property owners who allow people to come in and rent property, uh, rent out, abandon RVs on their property to people. It creates a number of problematic situations. So we decided to take this as a whole picture and, and design a program. The offer to the cities is, at this moment, we'd like to just simply say, each city has currently credit for two RV removals. That's based upon this general assumption that your RVs are gonna have asbestos, there should be garbage all around, there should be boats attached and other things. But in, in essence, about $20,000, $25,000 of expenditure would be available to the cities to remove these. Um, there's two forms that you could do that with, and it's, it's really up to the cities. And then if you choose to participate in this program, we'll do the simple MOU. What we're trying to do is go for an easy button so that the city and the county can enter into the MOU. The city then gets a choice, and here's your choice. You can spend the money on city property, on, uh, city roadways and remove the RVs that way. Or, and the county has been experimenting with this, we've been going onto private property. We've gone onto one private property and written a contract with this person. And the idea there is, um, into this story that I have here, a crime of bravery. We had a person who was the dispatcher who was bringing RVs onto moms. He was being picked by someone else, taking these RVs off of someone else's property and bringing them to his mom's property and destroying them, burning them and other things. And she was a victim in this. Uh, so in an agreement for five years of compliance, she has to keep her property in compliance of code, all code. For five years, we'll go clean her property. And that's what these funds are intended for. So the city would have to choose how you would approach that, as I can give you the framework for both. Uh, uh, removing from the city property or from private property. But in essence, the city goes, yes, that's how we wanna do it. You make those decisions. It's done through law enforcement. That's the intent of this program. Um, and then, uh, you basically call your hauler and say, this is the property, this is what's going on. Your hauler then takes care of it and I receive the bill. That's the intent of the easy button of this program. If you do it on private property, we're gonna suggest you do an RV by an entry. We suggest you do a contract similar to we have. But that is the city, versus you determine your city's jurisdictions' decisions to make. Um, I, I tried to make it quick as I could to the straightest of point. If I went too quick, there's other questions, uh, I'll, we got open for you.
Well, it seems pretty straightforward to me that, you know, if we've got units, which we do have, um... We've gotta, um, forward on them. And so an MOU would be a good idea to... Do you have a draft MOU that we...
I, we're still working on it. This is flying along very quickly.
Okay.
It came together literally between Christmas and now as a final product. Uh, our SWAC with the suggestion, and rather than just handing out checks, or this just seems the best, easiest way to move forward.
Yes, questions?
So, um, what I understand, you know, you call it RV removal, and also it is for vans and stuff?
Correct. Um, it is a very loose interpretation of an RV. There are motorhomes, RVs, converted buses, boats, things that are on trailers. This, this is intended for these, and I don't wanna use homeless and campus, because that's not, that's not what we're chasing after here. We're literally chasing after abandoned RVs or those situations where people have inappropriate housing built in someone's old trailer or 1970s, uh, the boat, it doesn't matter. Those are the things that we're trying to remove from our community, which are not mean code and quite literally isolated to all parts and hazards.
Excellent. Did you have a question?
I did, thank you. Paul, this is a great program. Thank you for initiating this. I think that people everywhere wanted something like this for a long time, the government step in and help us solve this problem. Uh, one thing is the legality of titles. Uh, you run into that, right? I mean, how do you, how do you get over that, or?
So, um, it, I'm gonna talk two parts. Even ask the question, I'm gonna jump to the second part, which is chasing after people's money or chasing after people who may be the owner. Uh, the titles are all related to both of these. Um, the title release is the last conundrum that I have to solve. And the answer is actually in our hands. We just have to get the right appropriate party in. What would happen in the past, we had a sheriff deputy who could appraise it. If it appraises less than $500, the DMV allows you to release the title if it's destroyed. Um, what we're currently looking into is that that service can be done through our contractor, the hauler. Uh, and that appraisal can be done. And you've asked a very funny question, because that's exactly what we're looking at. How do we release the title and then how do we make sure that that title owner isn't the one who dumped it? Is the other part of that question, and we're currently working through it. If it's criminally charged, we will pursue, uh, reimbursing for those funds.
Good question.
My other question was, almost $20,000, if we burn through that, is there any more available or?
So the reason why I would be really kind of, um, I, I'm gonna hedge all my bets on this. One, we don't know how much each RV is gonna cost. Two, I don't know if every city's gonna participate or not. I, I cannot imagine someone telling me to go get the hype out of their city council office. However, if no, if there's not all the money spent, our intention is to come back and say, we still have more opportunities. And, but right now, we're essentially saying two RVs per city sounds like a very reasonable, easy number to start with. We can all practice and see how it goes. We actually have just now received, under this program, the first RV out of our road that we're gonna remove under this program. Um, but we've been experimenting with this private property and we're gonna, this, on March, pull the trigger and, and release of that property. And then, so we're, we're getting a handle on how to remove them. Um, and I apologize, I didn't mention this, the other goal is to rapidly remove it. When I say rapidly, not months, but weeks. Uh, about two weeks' time is what I would imagine the time period would be for that.
Paul, does it need to be within the city limits?
So for your jurisdiction, it would. This has to be under your control of, of that. If you have a state highway issue, continue calling the state and let them know that you have a state highway. Uh, I, that's a, if, if we can work out something with the state and they can use our haulers under this system, like terrific. But the state would have to pay that.
But if this is right here in Lincoln County?
I'm sorry?
If it's right here in Lincoln County?
You're right. And the forest, so, um...
Yeah.
One, one caveat, Fran has a question, but, uh... The, uh, the caveat to this is we do have our Forest Enforcement Program.
Oh.
And portion of, if you, if you read through the whole document, a portion of this money is to help the private log landlords, uh, logging companies with the asbestos portion of it, which is the most expensive part. We really didn't wanna just grab and offer private property, uh, just free for all all the time, but we do wanna help as much as we can. But on those logging roads, we will help clear them off. And it goes up to forest service lands where we get back to the federal level and we need to get back to saying the federal government needs to stand up and do their part, so.
That's a good start. I love it, I love it. So when's the, when are you gonna be done?
Uh, we will have this next few weeks.
Okay.
Tim and I are doing a, a, uh, dog and pony show around all the cities this next, uh, month. And my guess is when we finish this and we have a good sense of how everyone feels about it, if we have any challenging questions, things we may have forgotten. I am gonna mention to you that there was a news article in Yott, uh, News Times that, uh, went viral, as far as I'm concerned. They had thousands of, uh, hits on this article about the RV money that we have. And it's created a lot of attention. So we don't wanna create unwanted attention. We're gonna have to work a lot of portions to ensure that it doesn't create unwanted costs.
That makes sense, absolutely.
Can I just, uh, clarify, please? So you, you interchangeably say two RVs and then you said $25,000. So can we use, um, up to $25,000 no matter how many vehicles?
Uh, you, um, let me say two RVs. In other words, I'm not gonna be too concerned at this moment, uh, to say, oh, gosh, you know, friend, uh... I'm sorry, rec. I still have other committees. Um, the, that, it costs $26,500, you have to pay the extra $1,500. No, this is to say, you pick this spot, this is what you've chosen as your spot to remove. We locate it, we move it. Those costs are all covered. That's the intent of this program. And not to get too into how many dollars are spent. And, and the goal of our SWAC was to effectively offer all the cities the same program. So whether you're a big city, small city, you all have the same program. And that's kind of what I'm saying here, is show me a problem, let's go out and fix it. And at this moment, we just call it two RVs.
Wonderful. Any further questions, Paul? Alrighty, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I think it's a wonderful program. Wonderful idea.
Mayor, uh, we, we would like to get, thank you. Tim Johnson, County Administrator, thank you for having us. We would like to get a motion on this, if we could, so that we know who is in favor.
Sure, sure.
You're gonna be much obliged.
Okay, that would be great. We can do that. Okay.
Got that motion that, um, city people, they would like to, uh, participate in the, uh... Uh, the abandoned RV abandonment program?
Second.
Second, yeah. I think that's good, enforceable. Yeah, wonderful. Okay, we've got a motion to support the abandoned RV abandonment program being proposed by the county. Is there any further discussion on it? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, she said aye. She said aye.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, um, we're getting through this, aren't we? So, Kim and I talked about we need to... So it's that, some of our, um, commissions and committees. And so did you read Kim's letter, you have it? Okay. And so we'll open for discussion, um... What's in here? My computer was hacked this afternoon, so... I'm doing paper, um... And I can't find it.
Here.
Do you want me to? No, it's on, it's right here.
Okay.
Uh, I'll open just for discussion, um... They, it's pretty much clear, clear, uh, clear cut what we need to do, so...
Do, I have a question, ma'am. Yes, so, um, yeah, I have no problem at this time of sunsetting this committee. So, um, if we wanted to reinstate these, we, um, have to start from scratch or we, we have, I guess we have the template of the mandate. So we just have to reinstate the committee base?
But I think that would be up to you guys. I mean, the organisms that establish many of these are pretty old.
Yeah.
So you might want to revisit them, right?
So like the Parks Commission does, seven council, or seven ministers.
Right, right.
The knowing. But, I mean, people not stepping up, I mean, we're not...
I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I just was, um, looking at the process if we wanted to reinstate. So, um, I would like to separate out the sunsetting of these or the, uh... What are we calling the, um...
Commissions and committees.
The termination of these, uh, commissions and committees from the establishment of a potential new committee. Uh, Council, the plan is to get your thoughts on this and then we'll come back to the next meeting of actual documents that you would approve. So they would be individual. I, I'm not looking, I don't have anything here for you to do it all once. We have to actually do an ordinance, whatever, whatever we use the form, which may have to be used to some abandonment. So the plan is if you guys, if you're in favor of the options, to bring back formal documents to that's meeting.
Well, I have a comment. Yes, I do. I'm not against folding committees either. Uh, what I'm concerned about is that there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. And how do we get that done? One of the things I looked at was, uh, like on the Parks Committee, Parks, uh, we need a Parks Committee or we need a group looking at Parks. And I've thought about this for years. I shouldn't say I, we have, a lot of people thought about this. Proposed combining Parks and Harbor. Certainly, uh, an argument to be made for that. Uh, I would, uh, be reluctant to just get rid of Parks at this point. But I would be in favor of combining it under the existing committee. I'm for, I'm for five-member committees if we can, uh, do them that way. That, um... If you have a five-member committee, wouldn't the core maybe three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that would enable us to operate with, uh...
I think that'd be something that the Parks, uh, Harbor Commission would have to take under, uh...
Of course, of course, absolutely. I'm not for an events planning committee. I want us to get out of the events planning business. Uh, because we need to be the, if we're gonna get rid of the Financial Advisory Committee, we need to be the Financial Advisory Committee. We've got a lot of work to do on, uh, solidifying our revenues, updating our revenues, uh, on our, uh... Uh, short-term rentals. Uh, we're obviously losing a lot of money on the cable right now and, uh, we have to address these things. And, and if, so if we're gonna get rid of, uh, some of these committees, we need to refocus what it is, the city councils that we have to... We absolutely have to get done here. And events planning is, is, I, I just don't think that's part of it. Uh, that's the, that's the change of the context.
It's your opinion, but I, I really, uh...
It is my opinion.
Yeah.
That of all.
And I don't agree with it, because I think events in the city are something we need to look at. And what Fran has recommended and I totally agree with. And it's not really an event, but it would be a priority of mine if we had something... And it's not really an event, but it would be a priority of mine if we had something going on at the community center for some of our retired folks. And whether it's an art class or that type of thing, I think an events planning committee might be advantageous for us, you know? I had one lady come in the other day and I'm doing these morning talks. And she says, why don't we have a Saturday market here? You know, and that type of thing. It's somebody to explore that type of thing. And I, I think that would be something that would be wonderful to investigate, so.
Yeah, we already have two people who want the opportunity.
Yeah. That wanna, you know, we're coming together after COVID and people are wanting to gather. I think our, our fair, the other weekend shows that that would be advantageous.
Would that include things like beautification, the other before, cleanup days?
Yes, all of that, yeah. Somebody could coordinate all of that and gather volunteers and put out the words. And if we want to do anything for the holidays, you know, to put together that, they would have been a good group to take over a lot of coordination of the 50th, both direction for you guys. So there's, you know, just some benefit to having some volunteer with their feet on the ground to do this stuff, you know? And it definitely has interest. We kind of felt it out a little bit to see if we would get zero interest there. People want to, events seem really important to the city. Which is great. We have the salmon bait, we have the flea and flowers, we have
Craft feed.
Craft feed. And there's things that we might want to do and it would be good to have people help us out with that.
And I think it's a wonderful way to share the information that's going on here in City Hall, too.
Yes.
And I think that we could work very well in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, you know?
Exactly. Have to focus and we have ours and we can come and deliver. Fran, did you have a?
Yeah, I want to go back to the parks. I don't like the idea particularly that suggested of combining with the harbor, but I would suggest that we look at that more things and I didn't realize it was seven people, but the idea of a smaller quorum. And, you know, if we are looking at like that Parks Plan, I don't even think people know that exists, even though some of us didn't know that it existed. So I think with the exception of Parks Commission, I would support the sunsetting of the others. In relation to the events planning committee, I'm glad there's interest. That's surprising, but I have a hard time separating it out. Things that you mentioned, salmon bait, craft feed, holiday ceremonies, whatever it is, that really is the chamber function. And I don't mind a coordination role of the city. But to me, that's a separate thing than calling it an events planning committee that has the salmon bait, the crab bait. I mean, that we might need because Brady is doing that, all that coordination now, setting up tables and stuff. So I do see a role there, but if it's an event planning committee for the city, I don't see it focusing on the business community. It should be for the residents.
That's, that's exactly what it is. Yeah, it's not for the businesses. It's for us, our, our residents, not for the businesses. I mean, that's what the crab feed and salmon bait are for, to bring the hordes out. But these are events for our community.
Yeah, I have a comment on councillor Lex. Thoughts there? I agree with her. I, I would be for trimming down the Parks Committee to a workable size. But there's a tremendous amount of work around Parks. People are interested in the Parks. I think they would be appalled if they found out that we got rid of the Parks Committee. Even if it's, doesn't rise to the level of form right now, we can't need. It's something that we should work on. There's, there are many problems with our Parks. There's a lot more pressure on them. The parks are overrun with dogs. They're falling apart. As much as Brady and his crews do, they're constantly busy on them. And we need, that's one area that I think the citizens are going to want to be, remain involved in.
Might I, might I make a comment on that?
Yes. Um, the thing with the Parks, though, is councillor Beasley, what you just said is not wrong. However, that's city work. That's not the commission because they're not actually doing the work. So what they would be doing is providing ideas for what we need to do. And it's a lot of work and the struggles for our staff to keep up with what they have to do, especially I don't know what Spring Lake is like here, but I can imagine it goes crazy with growth and keeping up on that. So my concern is that we could have a Parks Commission, but they would just be saying the work that we know we need to do. Which is what, we need to actually come up with a plan to address these things. And we can do it, Brady and I can do it with his team. He knows what needs to be done and needs to be done. Any additional projects could come out and run that discussion with the brands and say, you want to see a drive? And start looking at the Parks Master Plan.
Please, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm not comfortable getting rid of the Parks Commission personally. What is the problem?
Well, the main thing is, all they do is they, you know, come in, there's not really any planning going on. There's not any, you know, they've gotten all of the information on what's in the master plan, but there wasn't anything coming forward out of it. I mean, availability of land for extra parks is, is nominal in the city. And so basically what they're doing is what Brady and Kim are saying is that maintenance. You know, this trail needs to be maintained, this sign needs to be taken down or, you know, replaced or that type of thing. It's more of a maintenance guidance type of thing, which staff is already on top of. And so.
But we never tasked them with, would you see, please help us prioritize next steps? Which land would you like to acquire? You know, we never tasked them. It's our fault that they, they were doing what they thought they should be doing because we didn't give them guidance. So maybe we could do better as a city and say, what do we need from a Parks Commission? You know, and ask them whatever specifics we want, knowing what you just said about what Kim and Brady are already doing.
I think the master plan from 2017 was really good. I feel like three or four of them left.
Yeah, I probably agree.
But they were not, when I started with them, one of the first things I did, because they were concerned because they felt like they didn't have a voice with the council. And I said, one of the things that you need to do is present what you would like. Because they had their ideas of moving the sign, moving the steel, but they weren't formulating anything. And in the recent time, I've had a conversation with a couple, with a one member who's still left. And a lot of that of the Parks Commission was one person's desires. And they were driving what wanted to get done, driving, and it was all their individual desire. They weren't focused as a team. If this commission, we kept them and they were focused and they followed the plan and came up with ideas, help maybe form work groups and things like that, that would be great, but that's not what the group did. And so it's really, a lot of it would be depending on who was available. I tried to get them more focused and said, look at the master plan, but there wasn't a lot of interest with those.
So there's still left on the table?
Um, Robert Vincent, he is not a Eagle Bay resident, but he's passionate about Eagle Bay, so that's a plus. And Sandy Uviri just got appointed. Do you remember?
Now we have two people. One person more.
In my experience with the Park Commission, and we probably have the same person in mind that that wanted to do a lot of things that cost a lot of money. And then it was
And time and staff.
Yes, time and staff, the resources that we didn't really budget for. And I think we accommodated somewhat. But I think some of the people that come in just don't have an idea that things do cost. Just you can monetize, beautify it. This is going to cost money. Where's that going to come from?
If we got the right people on it, that would be awesome. I think we could really make some efforts like that. But how do we get the right people?
And how do we have people still?
We have that. In the past, we've had that.
Well, I agree with Fran. I don't think that we're giving these committees enough guidance. I was really glad to see that the Harbor Commission that's here tonight, the Harbor Commission is, is examining mortgage fees and a whole slate of charges that, for its brain. And that's the kind of work we need out of our committees is to help us move forward. And we need the same thing out of the, out of Parks, but we have to tell them what we want them to do.
You need somebody like Jack and Liz to drive it, right?
Yeah.
And that's what that.
Well, we had, we had a strong driver in Bill Spores for many years.
I think he's been longer here, right?
No, he's been longer here.
Okay. So we, we need another Bill Spores.
Yeah.
From what I hear, he was pretty awesome, so. Somebody find us another Bill Spores.
Mary Short?
Yes.
Can I, can I pop in here? I actually served on the Parks Commission a long time ago and and it was a great experience and I contributed a little bit, brought the big planners to town and did a lot of other things, ran around planting flowers and all kinds of stuff. I, I actually don't believe we actually need a Parks Commission. I really like what, what you guys have done with, you know, sunsetting some things and focusing better on, on other committees that we need. What about, could you have a, could you have a city councillor be a liaison for Parks? I know somebody suggested there be a Parks Manager or whatever. I mean, I used to manage 150 acres up at Cascade Head and that's what I did all day long was manage the trails and the this and the that. And, you know, I could really see, maybe, maybe Brady would appreciate another set of updates on a council level, kind of working with him, not so much a whole committee. I, I agree. I, I don't think we, we actually need the committee. And then on the event committee, I was really hesitant about that at first. But I like the idea of if it's done as a transitional concept to where the city sets it up, it gets the foundation going and kind of the concept, but then perhaps they transition it over into a business improvement district. I will admit, I'm, I'm not a Chamber fan right now. So I think it needs to be driven by business owners and property owners. The Salem Downtown Association that I managed for several years, that was what it was. It was funded partially by the city and, but it was run by, by business people and property owners. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. So should we go ahead with, Kim going with the, what do we need resolution?
It's, it sounds to me that everybody is supportive of sunsetting the groups that we, with the exception of the Parks Commission, it might understand currently. So you're okay with sunsetting the traffic, the financial and the economic of the? Yeah, but you don't want to sunset the Parks Commission at this time.
I think just keeping it smaller.
Keep it as small as possible.
So we could want to change, maybe change the update ordinance to go down to five and then we have that recruitment fair coming up next week, next Friday. I, I mentioned that before and I was going to pass this out. It, it primarily shed out is the idea was to have, we're having a hard time filling our community commissions and we really need volunteers. So rather than just post a notice on the news, on the board, next Friday, it's a community hall, members of the committees that have openings will be coming and be available to have people want to, if they want to know what the Harbor Commission does. Liz or Jack will be there to explain to them what it does, what the time commitment is. So they know what they're going to be getting into if they volunteer. This has been advertised at the post office and the website, and it's been put out here, so I'm, I don't know if we can.
It's this Friday, not next Friday.
This Friday, right.
Yeah.
The 10th, yes. I'm, I'm hoping and we're going to push it out on social media. Ho- hopefully councillor Swaller will help me get the word out. And I'm hoping we have people that come and talk. Um, councillor Beasley is going to talk about the budget committee. Um, mayor Short is going to talk about the housing. Um, we're going to have some people there. Uh, we also are going to talk about the awareness awareness and have some information, even for residents about it. So it's kind of a recruitment fair and a transfer if needed. Well, even if we don't have somebody representing Parks, unless Sandy or Robert can do it, and if we have that, that plan, yeah, that would be very, people will be excited to do that.
Sure, we could, yeah. Sure, um, I think, I think I could probably, unless Robert has something to come on, I suspect I can get him and he's a very good shoozer, so. I will, I will see if he can go. So if that's the council's desire, this is, let's see what we can do with getting it reformed with a smaller group, then I will proceed with that.
I'll try to help with Parks.
Well, you do help with Parks.
Well, no, but I, we have to be at an event explaining.
Oh, okay, got you, got you.
Because I usually attend the meetings, so.
Yes, we both attend the Parks.
It sounds like we need to have a workshop with the two members that are on Parks. So you haven't met with them and they don't like we did with planning?
They aren't able to actually do anything at this point, so you might maybe wait until we at least have a, we get a membership short and we have corp. Because right now, they can't really even meet.
What, maybe the Fair Mic help?
The Fair Mic, I'm hoping it does. I really am hoping we get some spots filled.
I have one more question. Is there any exception where a councillor can serve on Parks?
That was.
Not really. I think we could, we could make that available. Are you, are you on?
I, I would say I would be against that because these are citizen committees. And the presence of the city councillor waits decision-making ability, ability, I consider, in your part here.
Well, yes and, I think yes and no, because they can't vote. The council can just be there as a liaison and they can bring back the discussions to the council. And they won't vote, they won't have any, but at least there's some participation, I guess, that maybe the Parks Commission gives, like. Because a lot of complaints, at least per one member, was that they didn't feel like the council was there. You, you guys did, you just didn't always agree with what was wanted, so.
Well, that disturbed me, but two, but what we didn't do is engage with them.
Yes, we did.
Oh, absolutely, he was engaged.
Well, does he under, did we give him an opportunity to understand how the city is?
I, I had many discussions with him. I believe council members did too, and Brady did.
Well, it's just important to, for us to remember all the time that these committees may have priorities they bring to us. Their priorities have got to be as important as ours. As city councillors, we've got to remember, it's just not our projects and our plans. It's, you know, it's other people out there that have things they want to do.
Yes, exactly.
Well, that's true, but council has the ultimate say. So if the council decides that moving the seal from the scenic lands outside the Highway 101, they, they didn't fit that, even though it was a recommendation by the Parks Committee. The council could say, we want the seals to be where it is.
I'm, I'm not saying.
But those were the types of things we were paying.
I'm not saying he was right. I'm, I'm not even for some of the stuff that came up.
Okay.
But thank you.
But I can promise you, he was listening to.
In our strategic planning that we did in December 2002, we talked about having a council person within the committees as an advisor, what have you. And that was, that was one of our plans.
Well, there is.
That was already approved.
Or, excuse me, are you talking about going to a meeting?
We had a strategic planning section and that was one of the goals, that each, like seven, yes, and then Harbor, what have you, have a, have a city councillor that's involved with their particular individual, individual committee.
Okay, kind of just what we were talking about.
Are you talking about attending meetings?
Well, attending meetings, um, the.
Being the point person.
Yeah, point person, because, you know, we, we've heard for a long time that the city council doesn't listen to us and what have you, so that was part of what we decided to do to make sure we at least make them sure that we were listening to them. And I think it'd be appropriate.
I think personally, I can't attend any more meetings.
She really can't.
Thank you.
I have a time constraints and, and as much as, you know, I love our commissions, I, I personally, I don't have the time.
Well, I'm just saying that was approved.
I know. But there's six others of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. That can support.
I think you should get all six of them.
Let's move on, guys. Uh, so what is the direction of Parks Mission? Just reduce the membership, just reduce the membership, go for the recruitment. Um, just bring back the reduction of membership to you guys next time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
And what is the direction on the next time?
Well, I personally would like to see it go forward.
Well, I personally would like to see it go forward, but that's the council's decision.
Uh, just like a agreement for me, do you want me to come forward with one that you can discuss, a proposed resolution you can discuss next time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm interested in it, we just need some more clarification.
Absolutely, absolutely. I will prepare that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, um, it's Lower Main Street. And Kim, this looks really interesting, um, can you, I know you've been, uh, can you tell us about what's a city that's been.
Actually, um, could my answer? Parisburg, for example, is in the middle of, they just got approved of exploring downtown, so they're just in the middle of their recruitment. Uh, so the idea with this, of Main Street, I, so I, I love our, just absolutely love it. It's one of the first things, side of the ocean, which takes priority, first things I feel I love with Deepo Bay. Um, and I really want to see the Chamber City with uh getting the businesses revised, getting them interested, getting them going. This is our first step as a city to get something together that can ultimately be run out of doubt how business works. This is just a way for we to get resources to grant and information that will revitalize downtown, if you will, that will make Main Street or be Main Street. And if you look at the uh, if you look at the packet that came with it, the first thing we would do, it's not any cost, it's just a saying we want to start, this is our first step, this is getting our feet wet, it's no commitment except getting our feet wet. If we decide that ultimately this program isn't for us, and then we would just say, uh, we're not interested in proceeding. So it's really the first step of something there, do you know?
Yes.
Okay, so I have been a part of a Main Street community, I have gone to their annual conference before. Um, I don't think that Deepo Bay really needs the Main Street program, our downtown is in very good shape.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the things that really stood out to me on us with our commitment is that number one, we would have to form a downtown revitalization organization within a year. Number two, we would have to send a representative to at least one Main Street program training per year, that's very expensive. Um, and then down the line, you're also saying, you know, in the future, we would be, it, there are more commitments, um. I, uh.
I should, I should have said financial, I forgot for our.
I, I don't think it's something that we need to prioritize right now for some.
Yes, Kim.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I, I um, I agree with Lindsay, but for a different reason, I haven't, I haven't been intimately involved with one, but I have a really, really bad taste in my mouth from um about downtown and trying to make it more cohesive or more attractive. Because when I was on the planning commission, we tried to um, suggest some design standards for new revitalization and we got totally shut down about um, and even proposing something as audacious as, you know, having uniform signage or, you know, restricting the sand-colored building that could exist, you know, things like that. And until the business community shows any interest in having any assistance, and that's what the Urban Renewal District has funds for, and people wanted to suggest that, that improves property values and judges more tax revenue, whatever, whatever, but um, yeah, so I'm, I'm skeptical of the city becoming the um the uh, focus for this. If the chamber or business community wanted to put this forward and wanted to have the assistance of the city, that might be a different thing.
Gotcha.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Not that I need to add anything on this, but I agree with, uh, both of these city councillors over there. Uh, this is a good enough program, I think the city got involved in it, but uh, we need to keep our eye on the ball. We've got so many moving parts right now that it, that, you know, I can't keep up with them and I'm a pretty good multitasker. Uh, so I'd just like to see us focus, I mean, we've got a birthday party going, we've got, you know, uh, financials that need to be balanced, we're going into our budget year. Let's just pull back a little bit. We're going, we've had, this is our fourth meeting in two days.
Yeah.
So let's uh, let's, you know, focus on what we need to do.
Third, third.
I just think that.
We made, you didn't miss one, we missed one.
We only missed one, yes, that's our garbage.
All righty.
So we'll just table this one first.
Sounds good.
It was good information and, and I, I like the program, but I agree, we've got a lot going on. Okay, uh, going forward, okay, so we've got a intergovernmental, uh, governmental agreement that um, our attorney has also reviewed and gave his staff a very approval on, so this is um the million dollars, uh, part of the advisory group, so I'll open the floor, any questions on the um, I T A?
No, I think we have to be a part of this.
Yes, we do.
And I move that uh, we uh, authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement on homelessness.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. It's been moved in second to accept the uh, intergovernmental agreement as presented uh, coordinated office on homelessness. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? All of Peter, Sandy?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, we'll get this signed and actually, I have a meeting with Sandy tomorrow, uh, on this, with this, and um the consultant is gonna be coming to each and every city to interview all of us, all, you know, as how, how we move on with that process as well. Um, P and D Services, Liz, did you have some other additional information or what's happening is we've already maybe go to the expenses page on page number, you know, seventy-two, we do. Um, we have one additional expense, we had already approved the hundred and sixty-six thousand in our budget. We have uh, additional fifteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars, which is coming our way for this, uh, if you can believe it, architectural.
Archaeological.
Archaeological, Sandy.
Yeah.
Um, inspection that we have to do surveys, so um, this is basically, the attorney has also gone through this with a fine tooth comb and has given his depth of approval as, on this as well. So this allows our current uh, engineers to complete the uh sort of.
Permanently.
Permanently, yeah, and the construction.
Yeah.
That's why I was going forward with all of that, so.
May.
Any discussion, yes? So what I didn't get is this archaeological investigations Northwest, are they then subcontractors to P and D? Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So their scope of services then is incorporated into the um into the deliverables essentially from P and D?
Correct. They, uh, they explained that the surveyor would bill P and D and P and D would basically still pay a bill less. And they're not doing any markup on it, so that's not pretty, pretty good, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's good, I just um so I, I, and I, I reviewed it from a more surface than I should, but um, it wasn't clear to me, I mean, there was a reference to the archaeological services. I don't know if the cross-reference in the P and D contract was strong enough to tie the archaeological services that came from that group to the P and D deliverables. Um, it's in there. It is, it's there, but it's so, okay, yeah, do show me, page eight, okay.
It's the today construction support.
Perform all cultural resource study work as a sub, uh, on the graph, subconsultant to Campbell Environmental. Neither P and D nor Campbell Environmental proposes to add markup. We presume the process of the drag has to expense the convenience to the city. But it just says, we'll perform all cultural resource study work as a subject contract, it doesn't say we'll perform all cultural resource study work as outlined in the proposal by archaeological, you know, there's no tie between the two. No formal tie in the contract. Um, so I'd feel a hell of a lot more comfortable if it was in that eight of ten. If you would just say, as proposed by archaeological investigations Northwest, P and D, you know, memo dated January twenty-seventh. Some sort of cross-reference that says, these are the deliverables that will be delivered and we, we are responsible for making sure those are delivered. It's, it's, it's probably a minor issue, but you know, when it comes down to any issues, it's whatever's in the contract, whatever's in black and white.
I, I think they won't have any issues, did you?
Right.
Did you get a copy of this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you thought about that, um.
Yeah, what I'm saying.
The scope of work.
Yeah, but the P and D contract does not incorporate the scope of work of this in a real linear way.
Yeah, I, I, I understand you saying, I don't.
Uh, it does on page, well, there's one, but uh, we can get that.
I'm sure they will. But their actual cost breakdown does incorporate it um, that way, but uh, I just feel a lot more comfortable.
It's sure it's there, but any problems happen.
I think.
They'll do it, they'll do it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
It's, it's just.
So ironic to me.
Okay.
I mean, it's just not like we need to do this or what they're charging.
Yeah, it's just the paper work.
I, I understand, and I, I think any way we can protect ourselves is the smart way to operate.
Okay, any other comments?
Have we heard it?
It's fifteen thousand dollars, we should get Indiana Jones.
I don't know, we might, just, maybe he might become, I don't know.
Is there a motion to accept the agreement with the uh, noted changes uh, there? So, it's been moved in second to accept the proposal from P and D Engineering Services for the um, professional services that they're offering. Agree with the discussion? All fingers in the air?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
So Liz, Councilor, just to clarify the language, what you kind of like to, you wanna make sure to see is that um, proposals, man, if, if uh the proposal or something about as proposed by A N W in the memo dated
Yes.
January twenty-seventh, you tell us. Perfect, we've got it.
Okay, um, see, step reports, have we had a chance to review all of that? Is there any questions for Brady or Kimberly?
Do you have a cut, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. You wanna go first?
We do have kind of a little update on the Ron and women situation.
Good, that's what I was gonna tell.
Well, we should probably just say thirty-five. That's correct, I'll say thirty, and that's usually what I do, my apologies. Um, so we also had a complaint, uh, the gentleman who's made a complaint about it came in again to find out, because what we found out today is that a refrigerator, so the black van's been moved and I, I sent you a picture of the tires, um, Freddie actually had to come in and get those and take care of those. Um, but the back van was moved, however, she ended up putting a refrigerator out there. And uh, the gentleman told us, Day, it had been there with a sign on it on her property and then it was moved to the other side of the property, um, very quickly, apparently. Then it was moved onto the other side of the property, uh, on the other side of the street. So uh, Brady went out there and uh.
We proceeded to, we were gonna talk to the mayor, we were gonna haul it off because it's a danger to kids.
It is a danger.
So uh, there's a sign on it and my crew came back and said, hey, there's a sign on it, so it's gonna be moved um, by tomorrow.
Wow.
And so I called Rhonda and she told me, and I said, well, it's a danger to kids, she goes, well, I'm gonna put as many kids in there as I can and shut the door. And they proceeded to call me filthy names and play money also. So, I don't wanna say. Can you only imagine, there's asteroids and things like that, yeah. Anyway, so she said it would be moved by tomorrow, so uh, if we're gonna, so it's not moved by tomorrow, we're gonna ride the ladder, I think.
But what about?
She said it's very good, it's like new and that, and that she's giving it to somebody that is in the family that uses a refrigerator.
What about all of these other five vehicles that are out there?
Yeah, she's, so she's cleaning, that's why I mentioned that too, she said she's, she's working on it and uh, a few more.
What is the title situation for those vehicles?
Um, so if uh, the guy that will haul them off, um, if they have a title, he would give her a hundred dollars per car, he said. Uh, not, the city's not involved in any of that agreement, he had talked to the homeowner. And um, so that is, is, came to a standstill since we moved the van. But if there isn't, if there isn't a title, there, the, the guy will still take them with um there's this, where he takes them, they have a records license and if they're valued, just kind of like the guy gentleman was saying, oh, if it was valued at five hundred dollars, then um they could go ahead and, and, the, release positively.
And what if, what if not, what if they're, is valued higher?
Um, then um, he'll take them and they will sit on, on the lot and do the research, they'll still take them, he said.
And so um, it took a long, long time for him to haul the black van away. What's the status of them hauling these other vehicles, what?
Uh, the Rhonda is saying, they, she's communicating with him and saying they're ready to go and cleaning up, but I just, we just need to keep contacting her, like she gets more of a little or some contact, so when's the next one gonna be done, so.
Part of the problem is, is that some of the vehicles on the city's right-of-way, they are, according to the sheriff, because I, I've been speaking to Lincoln County Sheriff. Part of them are, there's other vehicles on that right-of-way that are tagged and titled. And if we don't have those removed, we can't have any vehicles that from the parks in the right-of-way if they're tagged and titled. Whether or not we can verify the name.
Well, we should definitely, I mean, this is the city's right-of-way, we say no parking, so we should treat everybody equal.
Right, I agree, and I also understand there, that, isn't that, didn't you tell me once that city was actually, or that street was actually no parking and just hasn't been.
Yeah, it was, there was a motion made for no parking, but if there's no signs, they should take it down.
So. We need to talk about getting it signed, which there was a reason why, wasn't it because of the street, it surfaces itself?
Yeah, it needs to be overlaid and, but we can have signs that are.
So why can't we make a motion to get the signs put up?
Well, I mean, I would make a motion to that effect, Fran, do you think that's a good idea?
We have.
It's already, we have already in there.
They have, they've been removed.
So we just need to get the sign.
Oh, the sign.
Well, we have, but they didn't move.
Oh.
They weren't there for
When they were there.
And it's.
Two weeks, they didn't walk off.
The part of the enforcement is having somebody right now, uh, we don't, and I have spoken to Lincoln County about coming out and um, sitting on the main one-on-one because I'm down there and people are just speeding through there, and he says he doesn't have anybody to do that. So it's right now, until we get our deputy, it's hard to get them to come and enforce. We can, we send out a letter, everybody and say, we're going to put signs up, that's no parking on such and such date, you have to have your vehicle removed. Then we can enforce that and we can try to get Lincoln County to help us with that if they don't do that. Is that what you would like to do?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is a neighbor across from Rhonda that does park a vehicle there and the reason he does that is because if he moves that vehicle, she will park a vehicle there.
Yeah, that's the red.
Yeah.
Well, but if this person understands that.
He'll work with.
Yeah, that they're establishing precedent, if he has his vehicle and nobody else does. But there's one at the end of the street too, that's on the right-of-way?
Uh, yeah, here, it's, it's another one of her cars that's at the very end, it's a Subaru, so look, there.
So according to the deck, the lieutenant who went out there, there were several vehicles parked there that were not hers. And he verified, so there are other.
They are in hers, though, that she's moved them there.
No, he said they are not hers, maybe they're not tagged and titled to her.
Right, they're not.
But they're hers, but it makes it sound you could ever remove them, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, like on the weekends, people do park on the right-of-way.
So I think what we have to do is we have to send a notice to everybody on that street that we're going to put the signs back up and enforce this by a certain, they have to move their vehicles by a certain date. And then we try to, I can talk to the lieutenant and see if we can actually get some enforcement on that. Okay. Okay, um, does the council support?
Yes.
Us being part of with that?
Okay.
Yes, Lindsey.
Um, I'm really supportive and I think that we should knock that down. I also am very concerned about a pattern of behavior that we are allowing to continue in the safety of our employees. And I think that we need to look at avenues because, um.
I will talk to Lieutenant that there and see what he thinks we have to do. I don't know if she's that way with him, I'm going to guess not, but I will ask him and tell him.
I, I don't think we can continue to ignore the, the threats. Um, I think we have to take them extremely seriously, I know that we have been, um, we have information on all of them. I, I think that we need to look at alternatives, because I feel like every time this comes up, there's more threats.
I have a comment, and some concern too about repeated behavior. Everything is cleaned up, we have deputy on board, what's the station's not gonna do it again, you know, and what do we do then?
She more than likely will do it again, um, we would just have to wanna make sure we're on top of it and immediately address it. Um, so I hear, if I'm hearing is correct, you want me to, I will talk to the lieutenant and tell him the council has some serious concerns about her behavior, about.
Pattern of threats.
Pattern of threats. Um, and what do we do about it? And we need to, you guys, you, the council wants it addressed, how, how does it get addressed, what do we need to do? Is that correct?
Um, can I ask, if we are gonna sign again that there's no parking, if that sign goes down, does it change anything about our ability to enforce?
I don't believe it does if we've notified the neighbors, but I can also verify with that. When I was in Millersburg, there were streets that were parked, that were no sign, and the signs were constantly moved. The city was still able to address it because the city had informed them it's a no parking zone. But I would verify that with, um, Lincoln County tomorrow.
Can I say something, just, I'll try to be quick, just later. So this, they're moving the vehicles on the street is, is like part one, part two is, um, um, thirty five Cook has, um, RVs filled with debris that should, that are supposed to not, if they don't move within a certain amount of time, you can't store them in your front yard or in your warehouses, they have to be in an enclosed structure. So she.
Seventy two hours, right? Seventy two hours, isn't it?
Yeah, if it's, or unless it's moved, you can have a camper in your yard if you use it for camping, things like that, if you're moving around, it's, it's, whatever, it's, it's pretty much there, filled with debris, um, the person that lives there doesn't live in their house, they live in one of those RVs out front because they can't get into the house because it's full of debris. Um, there's, um, candles and food stored out front and it's all on the public right of way. If you look at the, if you look at Google Earth through the Lincoln County Asset Search app and you, um, you could go to black and white and choose the property lines on Cook Street and you zoom in. You can do an aerial photo and it'll show the property line is ten feet into all those, uh, RVs and all that, if you pile up the debris. And it's all on the city right of way, so we can enforce up to that point. But also the, there's the ordinance twenty nine and one sixty four of trash in your yard and storage stuff, so. Really sportive, like orders go, you could have a vehicle in your front yard that you utilize and do, you can't store all that stuff in her yard. So we have to address all that after the vehicles there.
You think it shouldn't be all together?
Well, you can, I mean, right now, we're just working on getting the vehicles off the right of way so we can get in there and grade the road and overlay it, which we haven't been able to, the garbage truck can't even get down.
I'd like to move forward on all of those aspects of enforcement, all of them.
Yeah.
So how much we need to prioritize, we're gonna spend that twenty five thousand RVs, if this is it, or we have other priorities? Because, like you say, it's likely to happen again.
Could, can we have that as an agenda item on the future council meeting to talk about how that, that, um, how you some RV money could be private? Was, was, was the information from, provided by Brady and all that?
In, in the case of, uh, Rhonda, are those aban- abandoned RVs though? I mean, does she own them?
Yeah.
She's not, abandoned them.
Well, we don't know yet, she just can't store, you can't store an RV in your, in your yard without knocking it in close structure.
Well, I put that as an agenda item, and I wanna say this is not Councilor Beddingfield's, uh, observation. It's absolutely true, we need to love a playing field, I would love, love to see us, uh, make this a constant, continuous effort to police our community. Yeah, because we are fraying at the edges a little bit and, uh, and we need to get on top of that, so, uh, this, this is a great exercise.
Uh, Councilor Beasley, I completely support that, I would prefer us to be less of a complaint driven, but right now, per code, we are complaint driven only, which means Brady doesn't take or can't take action until somebody complains. So we have issues, but nobody's complaining. So we either need to change the ordinance so that it allows some code enforcement?
That's a great idea, in fact, as long as we're talking about that, could you, can we direct staff to bring that ordinance forward on the complaint driven uh, protocols that we have? And also to give us a staff report on the business license exemptions that we're giving in that four time, uh.
Oh, yes.
And maybe we can deal with those in an upcoming meeting, so can you get those two items?
If the council concurs and would like to.
Sure.
I would love to see those considerations though.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Sure.
For Brady?
Sure.
Um, it says, um, property under the billboard has been vacant.
So the folks that were living there are gone.
I, so by their accident, there's still the campers there and.
Cause, well, that, that was all there before they moved in there, that was, so the people that owned the lot need to clear all that out, it's there. Now it's, they couldn't go in there because people were living in those.
Yeah.
Now that folks are gone, tents are gone and left, they need to be in there cleaning that up, that was the, their.
They're working on that, that was another update I was gonna give you, since then, the, the billboard, the people at the property are very communicative and they've been, they've been talking to our, our, Corey, our attorney, they've been talking to me by just updating us via email and the lieutenant. So they had to pay some kind of a fee or whatever and they were gonna take care of that through the sheriff's department and they should be, yeah, they were gonna get in there and start cleaning up soon. They haven't had a date set yet, but the contractor will come in and let us know when they start.
Are they gonna fence it or something, so it doesn't?
They haven't communicated whether they're gonna do that, but I will ask them if they plan to do that.
But yeah, if, I, I was told verbally that they, once it's all cleaned up, they wanna fence that, clear, go, clean up the, the brush and, but fence.
So like.
That's great. I thought I saw them over there yesterday, but maybe it was cleaned up.
It might have been cleaned up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was a truck there, but, yeah, seeing that they were gone, yeah, but they've actually turned and blocked off, like, if nothing happens, they can come back because they had taken this, this front, uh, porch area, turned it up over the front of the RV, kept blocking off and all the tents are.
I, when I heard about the RV program, then I, my first thought was the billboard property, but I'm like, no, they're paying for it, the company that owns that property. And my second thought was.
Yeah.
Okay, any more, uh, comments or questions on the staff reports? And also as attached was our budget calendar in April?
Yep.
It was, um, is, is that something? Those are proposed meeting dates, if anybody wants to see anything changed on those dates.
What time were you thinking for those meetings?
Well, I was hoping that you guys would let me know what would work for you. Um, you might wanna start, I don't know, do you wanna stay with the six o'clock time or you wanna start further? Six usually works for me, does that work for me?
Six, yeah.
So we have the twentieth would be the, uh, first budget meeting.
Yep.
Then we have the, um, fourth, May fourth or sixth, and then, uh, June sixth.
Unless all of those are on Thursdays, I won't be able to attend any Thursday meetings.
Are they all on Thursdays?
The last one's not, but, oh, that's. Yeah.
April sixth.
The sixth is a Tuesday.
Twentieth.
Sixth.
April twentieth.
The twentieth?
Is.
May Thursday and, uh, fourth is a.
Thursday.
Thursday, um, do you wanna know that we can absolutely pick another date? So what would you like to do?
I just won't be able to attend the Thursday.
Sure.
What about Wednesday? So Wednesday, the nineteenth and Wednesday, the third.
Does that work?
Yeah, Wednesday is good.
You.
I love that, April.
Yeah, April nineteenth and May third. And the June sixth is obviously the council meeting.
Yeah, that's a lot harder to hold.
Okay, yes, easy enough to do. We only have two non-council budget committee members right now, so I won't let them know.
Could you give me that again?
Um, April nineteenth.
I got that one.
And May third. And sixth, yeah.
What about the sixth, that we need to do that one on Thursday?
Is that, I think that's.
That's the June, June sixth is the regular council meeting.
But that's not a real meeting.
No, that's me publishing the notice, that's just letting you know when the notice may be posted, you know, on following months. Okay, are we good on dates?
Yes.
Okay, um, are there any closing public comments? Any public comments? No public comments, good. Um, council comments, I'll go ahead and start, um, our city recorder will touch in with this six month. And I know, I know, and part of her contract, um, is the balance of the five thousand dollars that we had stipulated. So I need a motion to go ahead with that, um.
I'd like to make that motion.
To give that balance out?
And that was for, uh, moving to. Yes, yeah, I'd like to make that motion to, um, for that additional five hundred dollars.
Five hundred.
Five thousand dollars that.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion before?
So happy to have you here, Miss Day.
Thank you. No further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not leaving anymore.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? And then we will have her for the evaluation in office, we have a third one here. Thank you, thank you. One other thing is that, um, I talked briefly with Councilor Rapp on doing a citywide cleanup. I was hoping to do that slightly around the first of April and that way we could, um, go through the city. I will contact, um, our North Lincoln Sanitary District to see if we can get dumpsters available in different areas, we'll get more information. But I just, I think we should clean up before our fiftieth anniversary and, um.
On April Tuesday.
I'd still like to do it on April Tuesday. Oh, April first, okay, that would, is that.
Well, no, she was just questioning.
It's just April twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't have a date.
It could be funny, you could do something funny about it.
That could be.
Yeah, we were gonna, we were gonna fill the spout in front of concrete.
Oh, I remember hearing that.
Yeah, that was in the meeting, wasn't that, wasn't that in the meeting we were gonna?
We don't have a date, well, we just, it's just a concept.
A lot of people were rattling over that.
And then also kind of clarify, if we can, um, maybe get some volunteers to help us with, maybe flowers throughout the, that type of thing. Would be kind of just an all purpose get ready, uh, for the summer and, um, I'd contact the businesses to get them involved as well and see what we can do and also work with the chambers, but Fran and I will get together and get you more information for the next.
Really, because I don't know what we're doing.
I know. I, I make it an.
But she didn't want you involved. Did you want to make a date for urban renewal?
Yes, urban renewal, yes, it's also on this here, so, um, we need to hold an urban renewal. We can't for next February meeting because we're already booked from Thursday to Broadway midnight.
Usually have it before.
So, Mark?
Next week is actually meeting light, it has two meetings on it already, it has our council meeting, um, but before that we have the, um, Thank you, thank you, Councilor Beddingfield. Um, do you wanna do some?
The first Tuesday.
Would be the twenty eighth?
March.
Or, well, the first Tuesday would be the twenty eighth, the first Tuesday would be seven, but we have a meeting then, we have a vice meeting. So do you wanna do it before the council meeting on the seventh?
That would work for me.
Yeah, I think March seventh.
March seventh.
Okay, so five o'clock on March seventh for the.
July renewal.
I will be zooming in on March seventh, so it's a long year.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll still zoom in.
Okay, is it five o'clock?
Yes.
One of the first things we'll have to do is, um, elect a new chair and vice chair, normally these are, according to the plan, they're supposed to be done in July, but, um, we have a vacancy. So let's, um, try and get the urban renewal, uh, reached everything before then to go. Okay, um, pardon me, but right now, Councilor Beddingfield as the vice chair, you're kind of the chair. Um, do you, besides the elections, do you have a thought about what, maybe you wanna share with me what you kind of want to discuss for the agenda?
Oh, um, I'm, I'm actually thinking about the package, I would just like to make sure that the package includes any kind of, like, legal framework that we have for the, for the group.
Okay.
And what we can spend money on, for example.
And that's all for.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so you want more of, okay, I, I know what you're looking for. It's kind of the same things that I've been trying, I've been.
I did, yeah.
To understand, because I'm not obviously really familiar with urban renewal agencies, but I've been reading and studying a lot, so, um, uh, okay. But I do have some information. Councilor Suckren, why don't you start this evening on council comments?
Let's make sure I'm not muted, um, I think that was, this has been a really productive meeting, I appreciate learning so much and being able to just listen and contribute when I can, so thank you guys all for all the work you put into it.
All righty, Councilor Beasley, did you have any comments to say?
I do, is it appropriate for me to make a motion? If I, if I make comments? It has to do with, uh, I want, I would like to, uh, adopt the findings of the, uh, of the fiftieth anniversary committee and to just, uh, memorialize some of the things that we agreed to.
Usually we wait for a, make an agenda item so we can make that. And we'll have minutes for you, I don't know why I neglected to write them, um, but since Councilor King has worked so hard on them. But we will get some of these minutes to.
Well, we need to move forward on some things like, uh, uh, Councilor Rapp, I brought up that point that I thought was very well, uh, stated about tying the, uh, emergency preparation committee into the things that we do, like on this T-shirt, they have a logo for our, uh, emergency preparedness committee, the tsunami logo or something, uh, on the other side of that T-shirt. And I think we agreed to that, uh, to expand the PR to include the direct mail. Where on that, there's gonna have to be something prepared on that. Uh, I'd like to see the council approve all logo designs and, and designs.
Thank you.
That, uh, including for the signage, everything.
Yeah. We're gonna put in there a full budget with everything on there.
Okay, great.
I, I think the idea, wasn't it to bring back things to the next season, like the T-shirt quote by the, um, things, and then you guys will make your decisions at that time? Yeah.
I just wanted to say. Finally, is that, uh, on this PR, uh, and I appreciate you putting that direct mail in because it doesn't matter if those food trucks sell out. The food trucks should sell, sell out early, that would be good for them, uh, and we shouldn't even have to worry about stuff like that. So, you can never go wrong by having a big turnout, but you can get a black eye for having one that is, you know, not a good turnout.
You don't come down? Yes, Fran. So, um, I don't know if it's appropriate now, put on a future agenda, but, um, I had on my calendar that the grant discussion was gonna be the next week. We had voted on that, um, next meeting. And then I learned there's a, and I was gone, you know, the Monday meeting of this, uh, fiftieth anniversary committee, then this one is the grant committee. And, um, to me, when you agree on a meeting date, we really need to keep those meeting dates, we're all busy. And, um, having new meetings scheduled unannounced, you be there, be square sort of thing, um, I just, I just don't think this is a way of doing business. So I appreciate not having meetings just appear on, out of nowhere.
So I appreciate not having meetings just appear on, out of nowhere. And especially on something like this fiftieth celebration, it's not time sensitive, and we still have months to go, and to have a meeting just appear. Um, I just didn't appreciate that. Or the change about our grant discussion, we did agree for that to be at five P M on next month's agenda. Now we have to go need a beach, it's like, well, let's put it on the next one, and, uh. Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, there are a couple vehicles that I think we need to look at, um. I think it's probably something for Kit, but, um, Brady, you know the Inittar truck?
Yeah.
You know how we have some benches on the public right of way just to place at the Inittar truck? In, or in.
Oh, seems, oh.
Oh, I thought she said something else, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's out on that, that's, uh, Floral Street goes through there, it's a vacated, yeah.
Yes, so it appears that there are two vehicles that are either within their like side yard setback area or on the public right of way, one of which does not have license plate.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Is that on the Ocean side or for the, the, oh, on like the Art Rock side?
Yeah, yeah, like right, kind of behind the benches, like if you're on the street and you're looking at the benches, it's like there's two vehicles that have been parked there for a while now.
Like. Oh, oh, you're in the. What are you acting, I haven't noticed.
They're not really far back, they're very close to the road.
Oh, okay, but they're in that.
But it's either, um, by the.
I saw one or, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me see.
My first visit to the point, I saw those vehicles, I wondered, are those from?
Is it part of the?
I believe it's the new employees, so there, if you're stopping to change your employees at the Inittar truck, yeah.
It's Art Rock, not the part of. Okay, all right, I know the guy I can call, he's working with the city right now with their sign, so he gets a really good contact with the, the manager there.
Brady, you wanna talk to each one of them?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I think we can go home, let's.
Yeah, I think that's really well out there in the next year, someone please, can you turn those comments over to everyone, so.
Hold it, formal, it's not formal.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the floor.
A formal, uh, because.